Good evening, everyone. I like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council for our special budget work session this evening. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Here.
Great. This budget work session this evening, we are covering the capital budget as well as presentations from the police department on K-9 units and license plate readers. First, we will start with public comments. As we've been doing, we have hybrid public comments. We'll first start here in the oratorium. If anyone has public comments tonight regarding our budget items, please come to the podium, tell us your name and where you live in the city, and you have three minutes. Go ahead, Michael. I think everybody else in the oratorium is pretty much city staff, so you're it.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Michael Rubin, Ward 2, I guess, near Flower and Carroll Avenue. I did have the privilege of serving on the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force last spring and summer. Just wanted to make a couple of comments on at least one of the budget items you're dealing with tonight, but maybe the budget generally too, because I will say I did some analysis at the end of our work and did look at the cost of policing in Tacoma Park on a per capita basis, compared it to a lot of other jurisdictions around here. We're one of the most expensive, and we're 50% more expensive than Montgomery County policing. So I think that's something you need to look at very carefully as we look at budgeting. I don't think we're getting 50% better policing than the Montgomery County Police Department would be providing for us. Not that we have anything bad about our police department. On the K-9 unit, I just wanted to point out that the vast majority of the task force was opposed to keeping it. A few people were not in that case, and I did see a letter attached by one of our task force members that was more supportive. Just wanted to make sure that you understood that. The vast majority of us didn't feel that way. The only other thing I would say is I feel like most of our recommendations have been ignored. We put a lot of time and effort into that. I encourage you to go back to that report and to really look at it. The most important one was to keep a public safety task force in place because we had just started the work. That has to happen, and I encourage you to do that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Thank you for serving on the task force. Any other public comments this evening in the oratorium? Seeing none, we will move to public comments online. And are we starting with Mr. Hubner? Or? I'm looking at the city clerk. Yes, we're...
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hubner, we will start with you. Go ahead.
Do you have me?
You're very faint, Mr. Hubner.
All right, hang on, I'll try to...
There you go. Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
We're good?
You're good.
All right. Good evening. Paul Hubner, Ward 3. Yesterday, I attended a county executive candidates forum for seniors and senior village organizations. Tacoma Park residents over 65 comprise over one-third of the homeowners here. County Executive Mark Elbridge said that, quote, "The county budget is the best we've ever had. We have more money than anticipated", end quote, and they are creating new programs countywide. The county is slated for dramatic new investments, like $68 million in senior services, 17 senior centers, new affordable housing units in Kensington, and more on the way, and there is no proposed county property tax increase. In here at Tacoma Park, we are mired in another year of no new services, just a 9.7% tax increase. Our staff have redirected $6 million from ARPA funds to subsidized, errant, poorly planned, and as yet unstarted capital projects like the police atrium and the library. All the candidates spoke of how the housing shortage drives up costs and the needs and means to support affordable housing. They all spoke of the need to create more sustainable budgets, fiscal responsibility, and the desire to age in place. Some advocated for new initiatives and potential increases to senior property tax credits. They acknowledged the middle-middle, that that totally unforgotten segment of our property owners just able to afford their homes but saddled between those in dire need and the newer, very wealthy arrivals. Our city council espouses many of these same things, but our staff seem unwilling or unable to achieve any of the council priorities. This is dramatically demonstrated on Page 4 of the city manager's vision for the FY23 budget, where he articulates essential core departmental functions: seeking revenue generation to increase revenue, mitigating unfunded mandates, reducing costs, and minimizing workforce reductions. His priorities have no place for the residents. They are solely focused on staff or structure, like core functions, revenue generation, without even one new source, and reducing costs. Yet he raises taxes while increasing positions, wages, and salaries. I ask again this council to return this budget to the city manager with instructions to send it back to each department to identify exactly what they would cut in their own department to achieve his previously identified 9% cut needed to balance the budget, which is exactly the same as the proposed property tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. Are we going to Ms. Miller now?
Yes.
And so, Ms. Miller, you're up next.
Good evening. I'm Sue Miller, Ward 3. In 2008, when my children were 11 and 14, I took them to Birmingham, Alabama. On the Freedom Walk there, we saw the cast iron sculpture of three lunging and snarling police dogs, reminders of the violence of the 1963 civil rights struggle there. It was a history lesson in police dogs as a tool of oppression and a reminder of the multi-generational terror that they can instill. Ten years later in 2018, the attack on a black woman bystander by a Tacoma Park police dog reminded us that our control of dogs will always be imperfect. There will always be system errors, human errors, and dog errors. And the idea that this expensive and tragic incident will only be discussed behind closed doors because it was deemed a personnel issue does not reassure the community. Then, in April 2021, my son and I walked down to the Tacoma Metro to gather for a protest march after two people were killed in our city by an off-duty Pentagon officer. We were met with a line of police SUVs and barking police dogs. I am a person with many privileges, and I felt intimidated. That was clearly the point. I am a dog lover and owner, but I don't see police dogs as a fun, or healthy, or effective PR tool for our city. I didn't expect to be speaking on this topic again because you, our council, created a reimagining public safety task force with resident experts representing the diversity of our community. In their final report, that task force recommended that you zero out our K-9 unit, and yet somehow that recommendation did not get posted with the materials for tonight's meeting. Instead, on the agenda item for tonight, the racial equity consideration notes only that, quote, "Over the next few months, a number of follow-up work sessions with the task force will be scheduled." There was no mention of the recommendation to end the K-9 program. This is an example of our city's opaque and deeply flawed process for creating racial equity consideration statements. As for the K-9 budget item, I see that you're going to make a decision on it now, long before any promised follow-up work session with the task force on it. So as you vote, just keep in mind that you have already heard from the community in the form of the task force. Do the right thing and end the K-9 unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you for pointing that out. I'd ask the city clerk to please post a link on this agenda site. And I just want to clarify one thing. This is not a voting session tonight. We are not voting. This is a work session to provide to get information from the city staff on budget items. There are no votes this evening.
I did understand that. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure. Everyone in the public understands, too, that we are not voting on this item, that we are receiving information on the budget on a number of issues that I mentioned at the beginning from as... There's a lot of city staff here tonight in our oratorium, and that is the purpose of our Monday night meetings. Is Ms. Lopez with us?
Yes.
Great. Next, we'll go to Kristi Lopez, and Ms. Lopez requested additional time, so she'll have five minutes.
Hello, Mayor Stewart, council. Thank you so much. My name is Kristi Lopez. I am a professor at Georgetown Law, and I was recently the co-chair of the DC Police Reform Commission. I'm also an opinion writer for The Washington Post, writing about police-related issues, but I'm here today solely in my role as a resident at Tacoma Park for 27 years. I carry with me not only the above experiences, but also my previous experience as a deputy chief in the Civil Rights Division of the United States Department of Justice, where I led investigations of police departments across the country. My father was a homicide detective for 27 years, and I am proud to bring that perspective as well. I'm here today to urge this council to reject the proposal to restart the Tacoma Park Police Department's K-9 program. I have three points I'm going to try to make in the time that I have. First, canines are not required by any essential law enforcement need, particularly in an agency the size of Tacoma Park. Canines are a choice to accommodate the preferences of some police officers and some police chiefs, not an essential public safety tool. Second, that choice should be made on the basis of whether the community's safety benefits of having a police canine outweigh the cost. And here to the contrary, the cost of a police canine clearly outweighed the benefits. Third, police canines perpetuate racialized policing and make it more difficult to dismantle institutionalized racism in our government systems. For this reason, choosing to restart the K-9 program would be choosing to take a step that affirms racialized policing rather than choosing to take a step that helps dismantle it. I want to talk briefly about law enforcement need. The data on police canines is woefully incomplete, but the best we can tell, the vast majority of police agencies do not have a police canine, especially agencies serving communities the size of Tacoma Park. What this tells us is that whether to have a program depends on agency culture and the choices of legislative leaders like you, not on any public safety need. I will further address the reported need for canines on Wednesday, given that I have only five minutes to talk tonight. Thank you, Mayor Stewart, for giving me that much time. But I will talk tonight about some of the costs. And first, I want to talk about the upfront financial cost of canines. Both the chief's memo and the actual budget ask, which is more, grossly underestimate the actual financial cost of canines because they do not factor in the time an officer must spend training and otherwise caring for the dog. The industry standard is a minimum 16 hours a month in training alone, and good handlers recommend much more. In addition, keep in mind that a canine officer is less flexible than other officers and is not expected to respond to routine police calls unless no one else is available. You are literally paying a canine officer to wait around and to train a dog rather than you police. These are financial costs that can be quantified and should have been calculated and made available to the council and to the public. Second, the financial cost of lawsuits from dog attacks are real, as this council knows only all too well, given the attack by Iona Brooks by Tacoma Park canine just a few years ago. Given time limitations, I will say only that even dogs that are perfectly selected, trained, and handled may bite people even when there is no such intent. If you give the police a canine, you are giving them a weapon that may once in a while attack without warning or without handler intent. You would never let the police have a gun that once in a while might fire itself without officer intent. You should think of a canine very similarly. Third, even if deployed as per policy and never resulting in lawsuits, most, if not all, canine uses will harm public safety more than they protected. This is because a canine bite is an extremely brutal use of force, and contrary to the implications of the chief's memo, the vast majority of canine deployments involve events that are not serious crimes. The chief's memo notes that Tacoma Park's canine will be trained in, quote, "bite and hold," that is the dog's, quote, "natural reaction." What the memo does not mention is that the force of a trained canine's bite is between 1,200 and 2,000 pounds per square inch, comparable to an automobile wheel running over a body part. Nor does the memo mention that a bite from a canine is more akin to a shark attack than a bite from the family dog, according to medical researchers. And yet, under the current Tacoma Park Police Department policy modified after Iona Brooks was mauled, you can use attacked canines in schools, you can use them to attack children, you can use them to attack people who have committed an infraction, not even a crime, you can use them for people who are wanted only for investigation, you can use them to interabandon an abandoned building where a child's keeping school may be hiding, or a person seeking shelter might be sleeping unknown to the building's owner. I'm deliberately using the word attack, not the euphemistic word apprehension, so it is quite clear to everyone what the city council would be authorizing. Last on this list of costs, but foremost in my mind, is that canines impose a cost that will be disproportionately borne by Black and Brown people, including immigrant communities in Tacoma Park. In addition to disproportionate deployment of canines against people of color, which is ubiquitous, the use of police canines perpetuates racist and brutal aspects of police history that we should be doing everything to move away from, not back towards. People who are Black disproportionately see police dogs as threatening because of the history of their disproportionate use against Black people in circumstances varying from marching for civil rights, committing a minor infraction, or out walking their dog. Similarly, many members of particular immigrant communities who live in Tacoma Park have an extreme fear of dogs, a fear our country is known to have exploited in places like Abba Gray. Choosing to start a police canine program at this time against this backdrop sends a message that the police department and city leadership is unwilling to put an end to what has been demonstrated to be a brutal racially applied aspect of policing. Importantly, this will be the message, even though I am certain no one on this council or in police leadership intends to perpetuate that history or those fears by restarting the canine program. This is what structural racism looks like, and this is how it's perpetuated by everyday decisions like the one you are being asked to make now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Thank you for your public comments this evening. Are there any other public comments tonight? All right, and I don't think anyone new came into the audience, so then we will move on to our budget work session. Our first budget work session is regarding the capital budget. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Give her a second. We'll get the presentation up. Continuing to plan for a strong, resilient future, and so looking at our CIP this evening, we'll touch on high-level budget context of the CIP. We'll go into the equipment replacement, infrastructure improvements, facility investments. We'll touch on the five-year CIP budget schedule. And then, before we go into questions from council, we have our department heads will address and will bring up the Fourth Budget Amendment that had the CIP items, and then our department heads will speak to some of those items, particularly some of the items that you all addressed last week. So looking at our CIP, it covers in our budget book over the five-year period, beginning in 2023 through 2027. These are the items that are cost at least $5,000 or more and have a life expectancy of five years or greater. The items that are in the CIP is our equipment replacement, information and communication technology improvements, park development, infrastructure improvements, facility improvements, and our stormwater management. When you look at the fiscal year '23 capital budget by expenditure and department, it's laid out here in this pie chart, and to the left of the pie chart, you'll be able to see the actual dollar amount per department for our $12.2 million CIP. And in this slide, we break out the fund sources and uses and sources, so which fund and the amount of those fund that makes up the 12.2 million. And I'll call out, we have the ARPA fund, the 1.1 there, the library bond, $5 million, the general fund, so planning, about 1.6 million there. So looking at the equipment replacement, and these are some of the items that are in the fiscal year '23. The roll-off trailer is going to enable the city to roll 20-yard roll-off containers for equipment, for scrap metal, storage, and haul debris from street sweeping, wood waste, and other materials. We look at the aerial lift. This equipment will assist staff in accessing elevated areas when trimming trees. The original lift was purchased in 2008, and it is well past its expected useful life. The fuel dispensing software, this platform will be able to help the city track fuel used by our city fleet. The recreational bus, this large vehicle is used significantly through recreation programming, significantly by the senior program. This vehicle is the only vehicle that has a wheelchair lift, and the senior program uses it very regularly. The street upgrades will continue to maintain and replace the damaged decorative streetlights, and the new elliptical, the equipment we have in that room in the recreation center is five years old, and we're looking to replace it with more modern equipment. When you look at the seven police vehicles, our focus always is to keep our community safe while transitioning our fleet to hybrid vehicles. The e-bike maintenance is continuing to enhance our police and resident interactions by being proactive enforcement and policing in the community. The police field equipment, we're ensuring officers have well-equipped to respond in the field. That includes fleet cameras, field radios, mobile computers, body cameras, tasers, et cetera. The smart board refresh, the $30,000 there, is for the existing smart boards that we have in the community center. They're six years old, and they frequently fail and fail to operate very efficiently when you're having meetings in those rooms. The improved IT security, this is very important when you talk about cybersecurity, as we've seen what's going on around the nation. We're focusing on here with the $30,000 to enhance our security hardware and software to address any security risks and vulnerabilities. And then the $95,000 for cable equipment and software, we're upgrading the lighting and continue to assist council in hybrid meeting capabilities, including ASL and remote interpretation systems. When we look at infrastructure improvements, these are ADA sidewalk retrofit for $510,000. This is to continue the great work that the city council and staff have worked on since 2010 to repair existing city sidewalks to meet ADA regulations and improve pedestrian access and safety. We look at the sidewalk design and traffic calming for $300,000. We want to continue to provide the new sidewalks and increase safety and walkability for residents. The $400,000 in street rehabilitation to continue the resurfacing based on the pavement condition analysis that Director Braifway presented to council a few weeks ago. The under $78,000 for the public space and transportation, continue building out our bike infrastructure, bus shelters, and our public land management through our Housing Community Development Department, and creating two-directional bikeways on the southbound New Hampshire Ave. for the New Hampshire Ave. bikeways, sections A and B for $313,500. And as we continue looking at our infrastructure improvements, the Coma Branch Stream Restoration Phase 2 for $250,000, the only stormwater project that we do have in fiscal year '23. This is going to restore the stream for a 100-foot section and rebuild the failing outfall below Fourth Avenue in Poplar Ave. The $100,000 commercial center improvements is going to continue our efforts in housing community development to support our business centers around the community. And the $273,000 CBG is continue to focus on those eligible areas identified in collaboration with Public Works that's approved by the county, various projects like the Totally Fraser Park in Ward 5. And when you start looking at our city facilities, you have $7.5 million on library renovation, which will provide this community a new state-of-the-art library for our residents on and to the future. The community center renovation on the atrium floor is going to help renovate the lower level of the community center, provide more access for community meetings, more space that is desperately needed, as well as changing, renovating the bathrooms. $15,000 for exterior resurfacing to be able to recote exterior walkways and parking lot surfacing at the community center. The $305,000, the recreation center redevelopment as facility maintenance and architectural design for the new center. $40,000 HVAC control system is going to continue to improve the energy efficiency of the community center operations, and the $30,000 is for police station improvements to enhance staff work environment and congregational areas. So as we look at fiscal year '24 through fiscal year '27, this is the look ahead from the different funds, and you can see the dollar amounts out over the next five years. And you can see the dollar amounts out over the next five years. Where we're looking at fiscal year '23, 12.2. As we move on to fiscal year '24, we're making some more investments. It'd be about $9.5 million in '24, and then it goes down to 2.6 million and on so for the next couple of years. These figures may or may not change as we move forward. There may be some items that we believe that we can do, and whether it's '24, '23, or '25, those items may be bumped an additional year. So this will change as we continue to do our budgeting over the next several years. And before we get into questions, I wanted to bring up the fourth budget amendment. And I want to bring our department heads up to talk through some of those CIP projects. And I'll start with Director Braifway, because there was a lot of questions last week about street repaving and the impacts to making changes with those. And Director Braifway, can you speak to the CIP for '22 and the fourth budget amendment?
Sure. Basically, as part of the exercise that the city manager explained previously, we met to reduce expenditures in FY '22. So at that point, we had some funds unspent that we were planning to spend this spring and summer for both street restoration and sidewalks. And so those funds were placed in the budget amendment as a way to reduce expenditures. Are there specific questions or the amount is identified? I'm sorry, I didn't watch Wednesday's meeting, so I wasn't sure what.
I guess some of the questions we had last week is that was this work that was planned and could have gotten done before the end of the budget, the budget year?
Yes, most definitely. Our goal is always to expend the funds that we have established for the fiscal year. So this was definitely an exercise to reduce costs. There were planned streets, as you know, from the prior presentation that we had intended to do in fiscal year '22. And also, we were continuing, going to continue our ADA sidewalk work. So those were the two areas where we reduced funding to the degree that we could, money that was still available in the budget that hadn't yet been spent.
And this was, I think the other question we had is that is this a carryover then to next year? Will you, or is this a complete cut?
Yeah, it was a complete cut, and in fact, the exercise extended into FY '23. So the normal amount that we would have requested for both those items, sidewalk work as well as street restoration has been reduced from our, you know, goal amount for FY '24, '23. So you'll see a street restoration, we shoot for about $500,000. It was put in at $400,000, so a reduction. Same with the ADA sidewalk work, we reduced that amount. And I think the city manager included a chart in the answers.
Ben, if you could bring up the last slide of the PowerPoint after the question slide, we can show that chart quickly. Thank you. Ben, do you, back to the PowerPoint file, the PowerPoint that the city manager Fox just went over, there was a chart at the very end of that. We're still looking at the fourth budget amendment document. Just let me know if you see it. Thank you.
There we go. Yeah, that pretty much lays out both the intended budget in FY '22 when we established the work plan and the reductions that were made to it as a result of trying to reduce expenditures for FY '22. And then you can see in our projected, our proposed '23, those numbers are less than what we would have normally requested if there hadn't been the need to reduce expenditures.
Can you just clarify because, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, yeah, go ahead.
Well, where it says new sidewalk design, traffic calming, it says FY '22 adopted was $250. And in the budget amendment, did it add or subtract? It added $100,000 to the $250?
Budget amendment number one.
To get to $350?
Yes, and you may recall, we were severely impacted by COVID in FY '21's budget. So the intended expenditures, based largely on our contractor not being able to mobilize. So we had funds that were intended to be spent in FY '21 that we weren't able to expend. So those funds in the, as shown there in budget amendment one, were moved from the FY '21 budget into '22 as a carryover in the more traditional sense, so we could complete those projects that had been intended in '21.
So maybe we should, sorry, maybe we should just go down a little. So for the city sidewalks, what we're saying is for FY '22, we're spending the $250?
Yes, we did that work in the fall, so that has already been expended.
For SHA sidewalks, we went into the budget last year with $300, carried over from the year before, $150, so that's $450. With this budget amendment, we're taking $200 out, so that leaves $250.
Right.
Okay, new sidewalks.
And that's $250 of work that's already done? Largely, yes.
And then the new sidewalk traffic calming, you have the $250 that was in the budget, carryover in the first budget amendment, $100,000, and that work is, the $350, that's done.
Yes, we, for that pot of money, we have quite a few projects that are currently in design. So I didn't want to, unless it was absolutely necessary, reduce the budget in FY '22 to freeze any of those funds. The full intent would be that if the funds are still available, we would ask to carry them over in FY '23. As all you know, there's probably four or five current active sidewalk and traffic calming design projects in the queue right now.
Got it.
Mayor, point of order. This item is not on the agenda for tonight. It's on Wednesday's agenda. I'm ill-prepared to talk about this at this time because I usually think we follow the agendas that we have.
I agree. I think we're looking at this so that we understand what's in the budget, what's being proposed in next year's budget.
But the item that we're discussing is about last year's budget, which included policy that we had passed as a council for last year and has nothing to do with this coming, should have nothing to do with this coming budget.
I don't know if the city manager would like to address that since you pulled this up.
Yeah, well, because some questions came up, and because we're talking about the CIP budget, which it ties into what we actually moved from '22 to '23 as that link gets to '23. Thought it was good to actually, since we have department heads here to address a question around the sidewalks and the street by the director before we get into more conversation around the CIP.
But it sounds like what we're talking about doing is shifting money from '22 to '23? Is that what you're saying?
Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, it appears the discussion that we're having right now is talking about moving money that was in the budget for FY '22 and shifting it to be used in FY '23 instead.
No, what, what, what's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. What I think, when I asked that question to Director Braifway, she said this is just being cut. It's not carryover. So I think Councilmember Siemens' point is that since it isn't being carried over and this is just pertaining to the budget amendment, and it was not on our agenda tonight, the appropriate place to discuss it is on Wednesday night. That's your point.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and I may have added to the confusion with the traffic calming and sidewalk funds. We could have reduced that in the budget amendment in FY '22, but given the current active projects underway, we didn't want to lose those funds.
Ms. Braifway, since we have you and you're at the podium, perhaps we can talk about the, what is in the budget for FY '23? So, and we can maybe walk through that?
Sure.
And so for city sidewalks, we have, if I'm reading the chart correctly, $160,000 proposed.
Correct, which is a reduction from our original goal of $300,000 for the next few years to finish the city sidewalk portion of the ADA work.
So that is ADA work?
Yes, that's the, yep, the city sidewalk work is all ADA work. We have sidewalks that are yet to be addressed in wards one, wards four. And I think that's about it. We also, and in wards three, yeah, and we have the Guti Avenue sidewalk. So there's, we've got a projection in the CIP that shows a goal of funding over the next few years to complete all the ADA work on city sidewalks.
Thank you. And then SHA sidewalks look like what's in the budget is 350, and you had 500.
Yes, yes, and that, as you'll look to the five-year CIP, that is a cost that continues out over the projected five years. We've just started that in the last two years, so we have quite a ways to go before we address all the ADA sidewalk issues on state highways.
And that looks like new street, new sidewalk design traffic calming came in at the.
Yeah, again, given the current active involvement of neighborhoods and active projects currently in design, we feel like that funding is a reasonable level to complete the ones that are currently in the queue.
And then street rehabilitation came in $100,000 less than you're asking.
Yes, and again, as you've seen in my previous presentation, we really have a goal of $500,000 a year to maintain the streets in a good and better condition. And so any reduction in that funding just extends the life of some streets and will result in, you know, slightly deteriorated pavement. But providing we can continue, you know, at a good funding level over the next few years, we'll just continue to work on streets. It's one of those things, it's a forever kind of thing. It's not something you can stop doing.
Right, and I know I'm respecting the point of order from Councilmember Siemens, but I just, if the budget amendment four goes forward, what this does, what I'm looking at in this chart is that for this fiscal year, we halved the amount for street rehabilitation. And what's being proposed is another $100,000 cut.
Yes, yes, well, we will have halved the money for this current year for street work. And basically, in the presentation that we provided to you on our street restoration program, we just had a list of the streets that were rated in the worst condition. And so, and we had an estimate for the amount of funds needed to address those streets. So you can just kind of do a mathematical exercise to see how far it will take you to get through those lists of streets. As with everything else, we just recently had a conversation with our contractor. They are extremely, pricing is just, continues to escalate, and availability of supply continues to escalate. So we are anticipating a request from our on-call contractor for a contract adjustment as a result of some of this work. Now, you know, hopefully, some will have some improvement, but it really depends a lot on a global situation in which we have no control over. So it's really difficult to know if we waited six months, prices will improve, or if they're just going to keep. They rarely come back down as fast as they go up. So we're anticipating higher costs for a lot of that type of work.
Great, thank you. All right, so as Councilmember Siemens pointed out, we are not discussing in-depth budget amendment four. And I see a lot of people have their lights on, and I'm sorry, I was monopolizing that conversation, but I'll go to Councilwoman Cersei.
Thank you so much, and I respect Councilmember Siemens' point of order. But once I hear something, I can't unhear it. So one question I have is with the SHA sidewalks, and it sounds like there was a bit of contractor delays that happened in 2021, which kind of set this cycle, right? And it looks like we're still proposing an amount that is less than what was requested. I'm trying to understand what the impacts of that is, because it seems like unlike some of the other items that are listed here, there isn't as much of a lag in needed work than with the SHA sidewalks. And so can you talk a little bit about what, you know, what some of the losses may be with the current FY '23 proposed amount?
Well, we certainly won't be able to get as much done as we would have liked to or had projected to do when we laid out our five-year CIP. So basically, any reduction in funding just extends the time in which it takes us to get to that work. My recollection is that in addition to contractor delays, we also had a hold on funding in '21. So we, we as, we're told not to spend money, so we've been through this process before. So we would have happily spent the funds had we had them available. So it wasn't, in that case, contractor delay, it was council directive.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. And so one of the things that I'm also trying to keep at the forefront of my mind, because we did learn some lessons when we had to put a lot of the sidewalk contractor work on hold due to the pandemic, but then tried to kickstart it a little later in the season, and we kind of missed that cycle for, for kind of getting, getting in the loop with all of the contractor support. So how far, so basically, if we were to approve this $350, what are the ramifications of putting, for example, late in the fiscal year cuts or putting things on hold somewhat later in the fiscal year? Like, what is, I think it's important for folks to understand the ramifications of something like that.
Well, and, you know, to be quite honest, it's very difficult. Part of me wants to say, the lesson I learned is spend the money fast. So you have it, and then it's not there to reduce. But that's, you know, kind of a tongue-in-cheek sort of explanation. Though we have learned, as you mentioned, that we need to not only prepare our contractors for the work we want to do, but we've got to kind of get them committed, because otherwise, we're a small city. Our contractors work for counties. It's very hard to get in their queue when other jurisdictions have larger pots of money and they're ready to roll. So what we try to do is put as many projects together as we can just to keep a crew here and continue to work. So, I mean, the takeaway for us really is, you know, we're going to be preparing them now for what funds we have in fiscal year '23 with the expectation that come July 1st, we want them here. Here's the projects, you know, green light, go, so that we can, you know, continue to have those contractors here and keep the work rolling.
Thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. I know it might not have been on the agenda, but I found this walkthrough incredibly helpful, so thank you. I was a little baffled by the chart before we walked through it. My question is about that Guti Avenue sidewalk project, which, as I recall, is estimated to be quite a bit more than some projects because of all the retaining walls involved. So is this, and I know you might not be able to say what the 160 is intended to go towards, but is that something that could be used towards that project? It seems way too low to sort of move the needle on that.
Yeah, that would be my take as well, that, you know, as we've, as we've known with the Guti Avenue project, I think we. we've known with the Guti Avenue project, I think we had a cost estimate from the design folks for 185 a couple of years ago, 185,000. And I believe that was just one section, not the other section. So that's clearly, it's, it's in the 300, $320,000 range to do the sidewalk work on Guti. And that was prior, you know, prior cost figures. I, I would hazard a guess what it is now, but it would be slightly more. So that's one of those projects that will require a large, large amount of money to, to complete.
Yeah. And just looking ahead at our estimates, I was just glancing down at what looks like the, the future forecast is, I see FY24 at 300,000 for city sidewalks, and then nothing actually anticipated after that. So I wonder if maybe it would be worth taking a look at sort of the future forecasting there, because that might not be actually enough to, to get all of those projects completed.
Yeah. And that, that stop at 24 was assuming a $300,000 in '23 when it, you know, when it was first developed. So, yeah, there, it will have to push the money into the, into the next year, into '25 in order to complete the work.
Thank you. The other thing I was just thinking about as we're talking about this is that I wonder if there is some value in thinking about our sidewalk work similarly to how we think about some of the reserve funds that we have for years when we have a lot of expenditures and years when we don't have as much, if, if there's some way to sort of plan for it and kind of save up for a larger project like that. So we don't get hit with 400,000 in, in one year where we just have to do that in order to accomplish a project.
Well, Guti Avenue was really unique. There isn't another kind of project like that we, that we've had in terms of the ADA work because of the nature of the street and the nature of the existing sidewalks. So it, it is a kind of a one-of-a-kind situation. I mean, most of our ADA work doesn't go through a design process. We're just doing it in the field. The engineers are there. But with Guti Avenue, the complexity of it really required a, you know, design team, engineering analysis, you know, from the beginning.
Great. Yeah, I would like to see as soon as possible for us to be able to move forward on the Guti Avenue project, because it does impact the stormwater runoff there and, and the drainage and everything. But would love to see that happen in the next, next fiscal year or two when we have the capacity. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and thanks for the information. I had one more of a budget process question, which perhaps the city manager, deputy city manager could answer, but then a couple of questions about these numbers specifically. So with a lot of these capital projects and this projects, and, and these are no exception, it seems like it's not unusual to get to the end of the fiscal year and then, for whatever reason, it couldn't be spent. In some cases, we held it up because of COVID. In other cases, there was competition with the contractors or the project wasn't ready for some other reason. So if that money gets carried over as opposed to being cut, then it's still available and it's still in the general fund, just kind of waiting there to be used later. If it actually gets cut as some of what's being proposed here, then it's actually not going to be in the general fund for next year, right? So it, it's, both of those things can happen, I guess. Is that, is that an accurate way of looking at it, depending on what, what the situation is? So in this case, and I know the mayor mentioned this before, and I think it was, I thought it was a good idea as well, for the, the third item there, the sidewalk design traffic calming, which is really oriented towards safety, as I understand it, I think we should look at the concept of taking some of the, if we can call it surplus, the funding that's available, projected to be available in the coming fiscal year from the additional speed enforcement, to apply that to at least the item three on, of the four here, because that is safety related, as I understand it, that's a legitimate use for that. So I would say that's one way of reducing, reducing the budget some. And it does look as if, in terms of what you requested and what's being proposed, that it was cut by, you know, maybe 20% or so. You know, to me, we have to find some other places to make cuts. It's one area to look at, but we'll have to, we'll have to see. I mean, I think, to me, the keeping up with the street work is probably more crucial than keeping up with the sidewalk work. The sidewalks have to be done, but if they're delayed another year, I don't think you get the level of deterioration. Whereas with the streets, and you've made presentations to us in the past, if we don't keep up with it, you know, maybe one year doesn't change it too much, but after that, if the underlying bed begins to get worse, it really does get more expensive. So just in thinking about where else we might be able to find cuts, to me, the sidewalk work is, in some ways, a more realistic target than, than the street work. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Historically, we had used speed camera funds when we first started the sidewalk work. That was the initial funding source. But the speed camera revenues dropped off, you know, and so it was, became apparent that it wasn't a great way to continue that funding. And so other uses were made of it, but it's certainly been done before.
Well, it does seem as if, I'll, I'll check the number again, but it does seem as if the projected net increase for next year, given that we're going to be enhancing that, could potentially cover the, the 300,000. So to me, that might be a, a logical move. Thank you.
Councilwoman Devalla.
Yeah, just real quickly. So I see you gave us the list of the streets, and I see in the budget a list of the sidewalks, was it?
I think I have a generic list.
New sidewalk designs, right. Do we already have a list for ADA sidewalk city and state? I imagine we do somewhere, but I'm blanking out on where.
Well, we have a, we know where we still have sidewalks remaining to do. We have a portion in Ward one, a portion in Ward three, and a, a little bit in Ward four. Ward six is complete, Ward five is complete.
Maybe at some point you could, you could give us the details for those of us who don't know what they are.
Sure. We can, we can include the list of remaining sidewalks that have not yet had ADA improvements done.
That, that was my only question on this topic.
Councilwoman Smith.
Ms. Braithwaite, thank you very much for, you know, the work that went into figuring out these cuts. I know it wasn't easy. You've been with us for a very long time. We appreciate everything that you do for us at the city. Is there some best practice in how you determine these type of cuts? Because with you, you just know this inside and out, and you can determine 100,000 looks good here, let's take out 50,000 there. But like we've done with, you know, the, the cars that the police department is being replaced, we've put together these committees, and it looks like there's like this objective process in how we determine when we need to make investments in equipment and where we need to make cuts. But regarding this proposal, how did you come to these numbers? Was there a formula? Did you?
No, there really isn't a formula. Some, some of it has to do with how severe the reductions, you know, the message that, that we received about the, the amount of funding that needed to be reduced. And also knowing across the board, some departments have far less money, most of it's in personnel. So in the past, when we've done this thing, police department and public works department carry the yeoman's share of, of the reductions because our budgets tend to have larger pots of money. And, and our budget is not just personnel, but also operating funds for, for the projects. So, you know, that kind of goes without saying that the expectation is, although everybody's making reductions, our, our budgets are a little bit bigger, particularly the capital budget. What, part of what we do when we're looking at reductions is we, we don't want to, I mean, if we're looking at reductions before a budget year even starts, then that's one thing. And, you know, we try to shave off what, or we try to leave in place sufficient funding to get, you know, the best of the work done or the most highly needed projects done. We don't want to cut the budget such that it's not even worth it. If we had a street budget of $50,000, it's not worth it. I'm not going to have a contractor come and do street work for that. Same with sidewalks, you know, just to mobilize and the type of work it is. You need, you need upwards of 100, $200,000 in order to, to even make the project worthwhile. So that's kind of what you see in '23. In '22, it was really a different exercise. We had already spent funds, and so what was left? And you can always sort of say, stop right here. We, we just won't do anymore. So the, those numbers developed themselves based on what was still available. But primarily, it has to do with looking at the list of work and also trying to make sure that the funds that we have available are, are sufficient to, you know, engage a contractor with and have them, you know, provide some, you know, substantial work. If the budget's too small, we should just wait and pull it into a following year.
And so with our agreements to how the contractors come out every year to do work in the city, do we sign a long-term contract, or is it basically?
Yes. Yeah. And the council reviews those contracts. We go out to bid. Our street work is included in asphalt, concrete, and stormwater work. So it's a, what we call an indefinite quantities contract. And I believe it's a three-year contract with two one-year term extensions. Five years is the maximum length of time we have in those contracts. And then we reissue them the next time around.
So when you say that we're competing with, like, the county, other counties, does that mean that even though we had this contract with them, they have to do work for us, or they have to figure out if it makes sense in their work plan?
Uh, it, it really isn't like they're going for the top dollar. It's just they get obligated and agree to do a set of projects. And so that's what they're, they're obligated to do. For the contractors, I would hate to be in their shoes right now. They're trying to decide whether to add or lose staff, and then they're having a hard time finding staff. So it's a combination of factors. Early in the pandemic, nobody was working. So you couldn't get them out, and everybody was staying home. So contractors weren't doing any work, and we weren't asking them to do, do any work. But once vaccinations came in and people were able to do work again, then jurisdictions ramped up really quick, and the contractors had to struggle to get their staff back and mobilize work crews. So it's really kind of whoever had, had the crews ready were, were able to start.
Okay.
So it's just a scheduling exercise for them now, you know.
So there's no chance that we wouldn't have any crews coming to the city because they're so busy with these other projects?
Well, if, what it does is usually when we get in touch with our concrete contractor and say we have a project, like for instance, we did with our street work this year, normally we would get them on-site within, you know, 30 days of us saying, hey, we've got a list and we're ready to go. Unfortunately, what happened this year is we gave them a list, and then we ended up reducing our money. So halfway through, we had to say, hey, by the way, that 500,000, it's now 250,000, and the list just got really short. So sometimes, in the past, under normal circumstances, easily within 30 days, they would mobilize. Now, it's two to three months for them to mobilize. So it just adds to the time that they can come out.
Okay. And then one other question, the, the fuel dispensing software, is that you, your department, or is that another department?
That's, that's Public Works. We have the, we have the fuel pumps at, at Public Works.
And so does that software tell you what is the best way for the vehicles to be most efficient when driving? Because, you know, gas prices, diesel is going to continue to be expensive.
Yeah. The, the fuel software is specifically related to the pumps. So each city vehicle has a FOB associated with it, so it tracks the driver and it tracks the vehicle and lets us know what, what vehicle is being fueled, how frequently and, and what amount, so that we can, you know, track the fuel use, make sure it's being used appropriately. And then also, you know, provide reports about how much fuel we use and for what purposes.
So it doesn't have anything to do with efficiency, or?
No, no. There's other software programs, you know, for preventative maintenance and those types of things. That's a whole different thing. Also software-driven. But the fuel software is strictly related to operating the pumps and, and tracking use of fuel.
All right. Thank you.
Director Braithwaite, I have one other question. So we were given the street rehabilitation chart again today. So I just want to understand what is in red on this chart that we have says FY22, and then the light orange underneath that says FY22.
Yep. The, those colors were actually part of the presentation. I don't know if you recall, but we had sort of a map up and we showed, you know, based on the PCI. Those, those colors in red were the lower PCIs, the worst-conditioned streets. And then as your color goes up, less and less worse. Everything there is a PCI of 76 or lower. 76, it's a PCI goes to 100. I mean, 76 isn't a terrible road condition, but it is one that is on the decline and one that you'd want to resurface. So we tried to pull out what, under normal circumstances, would be our next five years of work. So this is based on a 400, you know, roughly $400,000-plus budget, just for the pavement work. So we tried to kind of show you what that amount of work would be each year over five years. So this is the normal five-year project. In addition to the resurfacing cost itself, we also have a inspector that we bring on, and there's, you know, other incidental costs. Sometimes there's more concrete work that needs to happen before we, we can resurface the street. So we, we don't plan a budget to use every single penny. We sort of show a reduction so that we're sure that we can complete the, each work. So that, the list that you have is just that, that was the exercise to sort of, and again, as I mentioned, there, there will be changes based on current conditions in, in the city. So if we know a utility company's coming in and the street may have a terrible PCI, we're not going to do that, knowing that somebody else is coming through.
Well, I guess my question is, given, and I know we're not talking about the budget amendment, but given the budget amendment that's on the, that's being proposed, does that mean, like, I'm just trying to figure out, are, are none of the FY22 ones then getting done?
Split it in half or less, yeah, third to, third to a half.
Okay. That's, that was.
And that's again, that's our.
Estimate, yeah.
That's our best-case scenario, if we can get our contractor here and doing work.
Okay. Great. Councilwoman Devalla, did you, yeah, yeah. Well, Councilwoman Devalla was first, and then.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. Are we doing other Public Works capital budget questions right now, or?
Well, if Councilmember Kovar had a follow-up question on that, maybe he can.
No, mine was unrelated to Public Works, but not this.
Okay. Then we can move on to other Public Works projects.
Okay. So then I, since you're standing there, I have a couple of questions. Speak to us of the $83,000 rolloff trailer?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I, I read that it was purchased in 2010 and had its, had its expected useful life, et cetera. How much does it get, we have two. How old is the other one?
We only have one rolloff trailer. We have two rolloff boxes, so we.
Okay.
You know, at any given time, we can, we can use them for two different purposes. We use one for the storage of scrap metal that the staff collects as, as part of the Monday collection. So when that rolloff box gets full with scrap metal, we haul it to the scrap metal facility. We have the other one available for other types of hauling, and it could be everything from street sweeping debris to tree waste to, you know, anything that we need to haul. And the trailer itself, it was, you know, it was an effort years and years ago when we first purchased it. I mean, ideally, you'd, you'd want a rolloff truck, right? So you'd want a truck capable of hauling a rolloff container and just a big, big dumpster. But the cost is extremely high. So what we settled with instead was to get this trailer, which pulls behind one of our trucks. Because again, the number of times the rolloff is actually used is probably 12 to 15 times a year. Hard to justify the extreme cost of that piece of equipment when you're not using it on a more frequent basis. So we need our dump trucks and use them much more frequently. So we pull the rolloff trailer with the dump truck. It's a lower-cost piece of equipment. But it does have hydraulics, it does have electrical systems. As you can imagine, it's a, it's a heavy, large piece of equipment. And so it, it really has exceeded its useful life and needs to be replaced.
Okay. So it already is the low-priced alternative, is part of, it already is the low-priced spread, if that's part of what you're saying?
I'm not catching it.
It's already the lower-priced alternative.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. It's a, it's just a trailer, has no engine. It does have wheels and a, a frame, but yeah.
Right. And the aerial lift is also Public Works, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And we use the aerial lift for, on, on quite a number of things.
Yeah, that gets used more, right?
Yes, yes. It just, it gets, you know, anytime you need to be elevated a piece of equipment or, you know, getting a person up to something, it, we have two lifts in the city. One is the. One is the scissor lift that's kept here in the community center, which is more an interior type of thing, and the aerial lift is what you use, uh, outside when you want to do elevated work.
Okay. And, um, next question, are, are you the person to ask about the atrium project?
Sure.
Okay. So, just checking. So in, so that what's this, what's the, I mean, what's the current status of that? So we, it, in the current, in the, I know we're not talking about twenty-two, but we are talking about twenty-two, cause there's two hundred thousand dollars in twenty-two and then there's a million in twenty-three under ARPA. Um, but that presumes that we are, are, I think, starting something this year. So, so what, what is that piece?
Yeah, that's the goal. And I believe, I can't remember, um, Councilmember, or Jesse Carpenter, um, the date, it's early in May where we're doing a presentation of the project to council, so you can see the current conditions and site plan use.
Okay.
So we can get into that in more detail. It basically, I mean, we have been, um, on again, off again with this project for many years. Again, uh, kind of a victim of funding and, and pricing. We've started it, stopped it, started it, stopped it. Um, we have a design, uh, architectural design that has worked with us over multiple years now, um, to, to get the project designed and, and put together. Uh, what we're envisioning is, um, you know, finalizing, uh, those architectural services, getting the documents ready to go out to bid, uh, and then we would, of course, use our construction management firm that the city's hired, Arcatis, to do the same kind of things they did for the library project. You know, cost estimation, constructibility analysis, risk assessment, you know, all those things to put us in the best position possible and to get the project polished up to the best position possible. And then go out to bid and see what the bids are and start the project.
So, so not to jump the gun on the presentation in early May, but the two hundred thousand is the upfront to get to the bid and then probably the bid and the construction and all that, which we don't know about.
Yes, and you know, in a, in a perfect world, I mean, again, should we, had we been able to start sooner, we would have actually assumed there was some construction costs associated with that, initial mobilization costs, but probably it will not be, given that we're already, um, almost in May.
Okay. Um, are you the person to ask about the recreation center redevelopment?
Uh, yeah, I can speak to that unless...
Or are we gonna just, I don't mean to hide them?
David wants to, but yeah, I think, uh, I'm probably, uh, best source of that. And it is a little confusing, cause there's two pots of money directed toward the recreation center development.
And that's what I want, cause I saw the three hundred and five and I didn't, couldn't...
Yeah, the three hundred and five represents the FY twenty-three amount, so it includes a hundred and forty-five thousand, that's a special revenue-funded item. The Housing and Community Development Office and IRA, uh, was able to get a grant, uh, for those funds, uh, specifically for design development. In addition to that, through ARPA, there were funds set aside in both twenty-three and twenty-four for that project. Um, a hundred and sixty-five thousand each year, I believe. And so the intention was for that first part of mon, pot of money, um, that was coming out of ARPA, we would address some of the operational issues in the building. We know it has a leaky roof. We know there's, um, problems with the HVAC system to the point that the weight room can't be used, cause we can't, we don't have a safe enough airflow, um, available, given the current HVAC system in there. And again, that building, since the city inherited, it was always intended to be eliminated, you know, torn down and built back up again, so there was never an active program to spend other than just Band-Aid money to keep that building going and, cause the assumption was that it was going to be torn down and replaced.
Right.
We're at a point now where that project looks like it's getting farther and farther out, so we don't want to, you know, further deteriorate the conditions of the building. So there's, there's actually, for FY twenty-three, two pots of money, the grant funds and the ARPA funds, and then there's another set of ARPA funds in twenty-four that would be used for design development.
And none of it is the general fund?
Right. The, the funds in twenty-three are assumed to be for, for what we just absolutely have to do to maintain safety in the building. Now, if we have a roof assessment done and the person says, you know what, we can patch this, we don't have to replace it, so my estimate of a hundred, hundred whatever thousand dollars is wrong and we can get away with forty or fifty, we won't spend that money on, um, you know, improvements to the physical building. We'll make it available for the design piece that's, that's available. So a lot of that is, uh, it's just funds that we want to set aside so that we have them available if we need to do the full, uh, type of repairs.
And then my last question, which I think is for the police chief, is the thirty, how the thirty thousand for the police station interacts with the atrium, with the, um, with the first-floor renovation, the one point two million that we just talked about?
Absolutely. I can touch on that. Um, the, the atrium build-out involves more than just the police department. There's other, um, departments that are going to benefit from that. The thirty thousand is just for general improvements to our existing space. Um, for those of you who have not been there, we have, uh, mold throughout the building. We have bathrooms that have chipping paint. Um, we have hallways that aren't painted. Um, so, you know, we are in desperate need of just a Band-Aid. When you talked earlier about the community center needing a Band-Aid, the police department needs a Band-Aid, and that's what that thirty thousand dollars is.
Okay. Thank you. I'm finally done. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Kovar, did you?
Yeah. Did I just ask your question? No. I just had a couple of questions and whoever should answer them. So, reference was made a short time ago to the atrium project and separate from the funds in ARPA, another two hundred thousand, which I think comes from the general fund, but it's all interconnected with the project. It's part of the same project. So is there any reason, and I don't know what my colleagues will think about this, but is there any reason that that two hundred thousand couldn't be, couldn't come from ARPA as opposed to coming from the general fund?
In the early ARPA, um, suggestions, we did put that forward, um, but it was reduced by council in order to provide more ARPA funding, since we already had that two hundred thousand dollars in the facility maintenance reserve in the FY twenty-two budget.
And then could you go to the, uh, I thought when you were talking about the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Boys, that there, it was two separate components, but I, I might have misunderstood that, so maybe, uh, what's the difference between A and B? Two separate sections of the project or two phases of the design?
Two separate sections. We were able to get, uh, planning office was able to get two pots of money, uh, Poplar to Ethan Allen and Ethan Allen to above.
Is that grant money or is that?
Yes.
In both cases, right? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Councilwoman Kostick?
Just a very brief question slash suggestion. Um, it, I'm, it might be for you, I'm not sure. Um, it's about the recreation bus.
I could probably answer that too. Unless it's used, if it's used?
Not, not so much used.
In addition, it's me.
All right. Well, I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, I, I just wondered, since you also mentioned the trailer, um, being something that's not used all the time, and I know the recreation bus was something I had asked about before and is not used super frequently, but is used enough that it sounds like it would be more efficient to purchase it rather than try to do rentals for each of those. Um, so what I was thinking was, I wondered if there are pieces of equipment like that, that there's some type of sharing arrangement with other small municipalities that could be arranged so that each municipality does not need to purchase one? Um, might just be something to consider. We're not going to hash it out tonight, but it's something to look at.
Yeah, there, there are efforts that have been made. For instance, a street sweeper is one of those, uh, pieces of equipment that's often a, a good candidate for sharing between jurisdictions. Again, it's, it's, uh, kind of dependent on how well the jurisdictions can work together, what their comparable need is, and, um, you know, there has to be really clear agreements about maintenance, insurance, who broke it, who fixed it, that kind of thing. So it, uh, it's challenging.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, thank you for your presentation tonight, city manager. Appreciate it.
Um, I just had two simple questions. Uh, one is to just follow-up question to Ms. Kostick's, uh, uh, discussion on the, uh, bus, the recreation bus. And I'm just, uh, curious, uh, how many staff members we have that are able to drive that or do we just still contract that out when we need to use the bus?
Yeah, well, we have actually two buses, but the bus in question, um, it has to be contracted out to use it. You have to, actually have to have a CDL in order to operate it, because it's over a certain amount of passengers, um, and things of that nature. But we do have a smaller bus, um, that staff actually drive, part-time and, uh, career staff actually drive.
Yeah, I was thinking of the larger bus, cause I know that, uh, we have not had a, a CDL holding, uh, staff member.
Correct. Yeah, we usually contract someone out, um, in order to drive the, uh, the CDL bus anytime we actually, uh, take it out.
Yeah, and I'm just curious, it seems like that might not be the most effective, cost-effective way of, uh, using the bus, uh, that having staff members with CDL might be more cost-effective and also might, uh, mean that we could use the must, bus, uh, more frequently, uh, for, wouldn't be a cost consideration, uh, stopping us from doing it.
Yeah, one of the challenges for the CDL driver is that there's a different CDL required, so it's not the same CDL license that, say, our trash truck or other heavy, heavy equipment operators do. We have multiple CDL license holders in the city. However, we do not have anyone who's licensed to drive a passenger bus. It's a separate, separate type of license. So that's part of the challenge. If we were to have a CDL driver that was passenger bus certified, they would only be needed in that capacity when the bus was in use. And so because of the frequency, um, it, it tends to be a position that's best contracted out or brought in on a part-time basis. If you had a daily need or multiple times a week, then, you know, those are the jurisdictions that tend to have somebody on staff.
One could imagine that that would not be the only responsibility of the staff member, though.
Yeah, yeah. It could be, uh, you know, uh, have that license as well as other functions.
Right. Yeah. Anyways, it just seems like it may be a, a potential cost-saving measure. And the other, uh, the other question I had, and this was for the city manager, is, uh, could you please send me a copy of the equipment replacement reserve, you know, the current one?
The fiscal year twenty-two? Or twenty-three?
The one that's being used for, actually both. One we're using in twenty-two and then the one that we're, uh, basing the budget on in twenty-three. Would be very helpful. Appreciate it.
Um, I just had a question. Are you done, Councilmember Siemens?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Um, just while we're on the equipment, uh, replacement reserve, uh, everything that we are seeing here that's in the budget is part of what was scheduled to be done, correct? Yes. Um, and then, um, I just want to go back to the hundred thousand dollars for the commercial investment that we talked about. If we could just hear a little bit more about that? Okay. I don't know who's, uh, up on that one.
Yeah, there, our, our staff person that was covering that isn't here tonight, so we can, we can follow-up with council if you have specific questions on that.
Great. And then, um, on the, I think I wrote down the number correct, um, for the general funds, uh, the, the capital budget, it's one point six eight million. Um, and I, I don't necessarily need that tonight, but if we could get, um, and maybe it's in the book, um, what is, of, of the presentation, what is covered in the general funds on the capital budget? Um, just to see that, because that's the one that actually impacts the tax rate. So if there was a way of just pulling that out, and if it's in the budget book, just, you just let me know. It might be, I may not have gotten to that page yet.
Yes, and, and the, uh, and the capital, if you turn to each, starting on... When, when you look at each, it's, it's broken out by each department and, and each department, you'll, you'll see it has either ERR, um, or has general fund, but it's broken out for each of the departments.
On page thirty-nine?
No. So, so like, for example, if you turn to page two twenty-four, uh, in the, in the capital, and that one is just police department, uh, and you'll, you'll see where it says the fund GF, ERR, um, or, uh, speed camera fund, SCF, it's broken out there and it has twenty-two through twenty-seven and a dollar amounts for each. Is, is that what you're looking for?
Right, so it's within each, each of the budgets. Yeah, I just didn't know if we had a table that shows the capital budget for the general fund, what's coming from general funds. The, it's one, one point six eight million. Is on page two seventeen? And I don't need it tonight, I just... I was just curious, out of the capital budget, what's being covered by general funds versus what's in the equipment reserve and other funds?
May I?
Yeah.
Mayor, so the general fund, um, the one point, um, six eight, uh, three, six hundred and thirty-three dollar mainly is in the, um, street program. If you look at the H, um, the Public Works Department?
Yep.
Um, a lot of the street programs are covered by the general fund. For example, um, for example, the city sidewalk is under general fund for a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand in twenty-three. The S H A sidewalk is under general fund, three hundred and fifty thousand. And then a new sidewalk design is under general fund, three hundred thousand. Streetlight upgrade is under general fund, twenty thousand. Street rehabilitation is four hundred thousand. So the total there is almost over a million dollar. And then, uh, the other departments, uh, also have a general fund expenditure. For example, the, uh, information technology, we have, uh, ten thousand for the enhanced data center security. And then the cloud virtual site infrastructure, um, these are under general fund. And, uh, under the police department, we have three, three, uh, projects under general fund. The fleet camera, fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. The field radio equipment, thirty-six thousand, five hundred. Mobile computer is twenty-five thousand. And also the licensed play reader is thirteen thousand, four hundred. And these are on, under general fund.
Great. Thank you. That was very helpful. I appreciate it. Um, anything else on the capital budget?
It's long, uh, unless, uh, any member of council have questions on the other CIP items, um, we have the other directors here. If not, um, there's nothing else from me.
I think, Councilmember DeBala, do I see your hand being raised?
I would appreciate it. I, I know that I asked this question, um, for more specifics in writing, but just in general, since the police chief is here, um, questions about, because it's a large number, questions about police vehicles and, and some of the equipment that, uh, Director Chung just mentioned, but particularly police vehicles, um, cause it's four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And I believe it's the general fund?
No.
No. Equipment reserve, okay.
So what particulars do you, questions do you have?
So this is, this is all existing replacements of cars that have been, just through the process, just tell us a little bit about?
That, that is correct. Um, as we've explained, um, in previous sessions?
Yes.
We have a vehicle replacement committee, uh, which, which, it's, it's not just the police department, it's also Public Works and Finance, um, that calculates replacement of vehicles. These vehicles are replacement of vehicles that were purchased, I believe, in two thousand fourteen and or around that time. There are many factors that go into play, but we are replacing like vehicles. In this particular case, we're replacing all gas vehicles with hybrid vehicles, but all of these are on a cycle. We're not adding any more new vehicles to the fleet. The only new vehicle that was added was added, I believe, last year or maybe this year, and that was to replace the body that, or, excuse me, the, the, the new position that we got in two thousand eighteen, but we did not add the vehicle to that position. So like I say, all of these are replacement vehicles. Um, we are, at this point, um, and I think I put it in one of the questions that, one of the questions you asked, we are still waiting for vehicles that have been purchased due to the backlog of vehicles, uh, due to the supply chain issues. So... So right now, we have very few spares, so if a car goes down, we might not even have a spare vehicle for an officer to get into, so we are debt, in desperate need of replacing the vehicles that we have.
Thank you.
Okay, um I'm not seeing um any other hands. As I mentioned last week, we want to start preparing for reconciliation, which is this time next Monday, um and.
Can I just ask one more question, I'm sorry, so on the equipment, the ERR, the equipment reserve, there's a total that we're contributing this year. And where am I finding it? How much is it and where am I finding it?
It's in the. So it's on page thirty-four, Councilmember DeBala, and it's six hundred thousand.
Thank you, okay, that's it, sorry.
Yep, Councilmember Kovar?
Are we um about to move, just as a clarification to the?
If I could finish my sentence? No, I was gonna say, we're gonna do, uh like I was gonna say, if people have items for, to, so staff can start the list on reconciliation and then we'll move to the next item. So if you have any.
Well, I had a question about the budget, a little bit more generally, but relevant to what we've just been talking about, so. Um and I shared an email with um the city manager and the deputy city manager, but just recently, you know, a few hours ago, so I wasn't expecting an answer now, but. There's still some um questions in my mind about the bigger budget picture and. How the um unassigned fund has changed over the last, or is projected to change over this sort of three fiscal year period that, that, that we're talking about. Twenty-one that we had the audit on, twenty-two that we're in, and twenty-three that we're looking at, so I've sent a follow-up to, your follow-up to my question. And maybe you get a chance to look at that uh later, because there are some questions in there about. The budget amendment that we approved last July and that will be similar to questions around the budget amendment. And I know uh my colleague doesn't want to talk about it tonight, but that other item that we're going to be talking about on Wednesday, so. I just want to make sure I understand really how those things match together, because that does contribute to the overall. Set of numbers we're talking about in terms of um what's in the general fund, so. When you get a chance, please look at that question. Thank you.
Great. All right, um so next week, Monday night, we will be discussing reconciliation items and so. As you're thinking of things that you want to put on that list is most helpful if they can get to um the city manager and deputy city manager. Um so they can start compiling information, I would like to start the list by a, a number of items, one. Two, um as I think we talked about last week and discuss the possibility of taking the ARPA contingency. Um fund of four hundred and sixty-three dollars um and put it towards the general fund. Um as was mentioned earlier by Councilmember Kovar, look at um using some of the um. Uh in camera enforcement revenue um to cover the sidewalks and street calming at three hundred thousand. But given the conversation we also had tonight with Director Braithwaite, um I'd like to know if of the three hundred and ninety. If I did my math correctly, that um, that uh, from what she would, her wish list, I guess, proposed list to what is actually in the budget. If there is additional money from the um camera fund that could fund some of those things, particularly, thank you for bringing that, particularly on the street rehabilitation, I'm most. Um concerned about that, given um the potential if budget amendment four does go move, move forward. That that was halved this year and then reduced again, so of that three hundred and ninety here, if there was something else, did you have something to say?
I, I just want to, as we're talking about the speed camera fund, we have to be very careful.
It's not ongoing, yeah.
No, about just routine maintenance.
Oh, cause it can't be.
There has to be a nexus to public safety, we're doing traffic calming, we're re-engineering an intersection. So if we're just doing routine, routine maintenance, we have to be very careful because they're reporting requirements, I just want you to understand that as we navigate this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um and then the third item is a decrease in um the seventy thousand proposed for the financial forecasting. And I think if we decrease that by forty thousand dollars and add all up those three items, we would. Get back to at this point to the current tax rate that we have this year. Though I understand my colleagues may have other things, but just wanted to put those three items on the reconciliation list to kind of kick us off. For uh, for next week, and as I said, if people have more things, you can put it out there on Wednesday or um. Email them to the city manager, W C manager. And so then we do reconciliation next Monday night and then it takes our finance department about. Uh a week, a, a little of a week to then prepare the budget and then it comes back to us for a vote. Anybody have any questions on the process moving forward for the budget? Nope, okay.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure I, I heard those, so four hundred and sixty-three thousand from um. Gen, uh from the ARPA moving over to the, other, four hundred and sixty-three from ARPA.
Right.
Uh and then you said three hundred K?
Three hundred for this, the new sidewalk design and traffic calming, which I think if I understood the chief correctly would be appropriate. And then forty thousand, if I did my math correct, from the financial forecasting. Adding up all of that, I think comes to eight hundred and three thousand or something like that, which is the amount we need to get us back to. The tax rate for the, that's this year.
Thank you, I just want to just make sure I got it right in my notes.
And then I was just hoping that maybe we could do some more on uh some of Ms, Ms Braithwaite's items. On uh the sidewalks and street stuff, but understanding that some of that may not be able to be covered.
So if we have other things, just send them in or mention them on Wednesday, is that?
Or if you want to mention them tonight?
Well, I'm, I'm pulling it all together, but.
Yeah, that's what I figured, but I just wanted to propose that, so as people are putting together their lists, they, you had that. Available for what I'm proposing, um all right, so I think with that then we'll move to our next item. We're gonna um have a presentation tonight on police K nine units and the license plate readers. And just to make sure everyone is clear, we're, we're hearing the presentation tonight, able to um ask questions and other things and have a dialogue with our police department. And the experts who are here this evening, we will not be taking a vote on this tonight, so just want to make sure everyone's clear. All right, Chief, it's all yours.
Uh good evening, councilmembers and residents watching. Uh tonight, we'll be providing information on the Tacoma Park Police Department's use of K nine and license plates readers, otherwise known as LPRs. Uh we feel both K nine and LPRs are vital tools needed to provide public safety delivery to the residents of Tacoma Park. Uh the homicide incident on Friday nights reinforced the need to have K nine and LPRs as investigative tools. Uh K nine is utilized on both the Maple Avenue shooting and the scene on Kennebec where the homicide suspect was apprehended. Uh we provided a large amount of information in advance of this work session to include our K, uh K nine policy. An executive summary providing an overview of the Tacoma Park Police K nine program, a list of significant K nine cases and additional relevant information. Uh we also have with us retired Sergeant, uh K nine Sergeant Mary Davis, who's a nationally recognized expert K nine trainer and handler. To provide us with an overview of the different uses of K nine training and to answer any questions you may have regarding police K nines. Uh prior to her retirement, Sergeant Davis also trained our Tacoma Park Police K nines. Uh in regards to LPRs, which we'll be talking about later on this evening, we provided an overview of the LPR program at Tacoma Park. Uh this overview provided a wealth of information regarding how the readers are used and the information stored. I should also have a copy of our LPR policy, in addition, we have Sergeant Keith Johnson, First Sergeant with the Maryland State Police. Uh who, joining us to discuss later on, uh police oversight of the statewide LPR program. Um he works for the Maryland State um Coordination and Analysis Center, which is MCAT. We also have our traffic supervisor Kyle Robison and Deputy Chief Andy Powell to answer questions specifically regarding the LPO program. Uh we'll start the session with K nine, uh before we get into the work session, I want to remind the council, this is an extremely involved subject with many moving parts. I hope that tonight's session will better educate the council and the public on our K nine program, the many uses of K nine. And other matters related to the use of K nine. As I've stated publicly in the past, I feel K nine is a vital tool needed to provide public safety delivery to the residents of Tacoma Park. And I do want to say something and make this very clear, I take my responsibility as delivering public safety service to the residents of our city. As well as the racial equity impact of anything we do within the city, very seriously. I would not recommend anything that I felt disproportionately or had the potential to have a racial empty, racial equity impact. On the people of this city, so understand that. We will begin the K nine session with a presentation from retired K nine supervisor Mary Davis. I'll be inviting her to the podium shortly, but I wanted to provide an overview of her training and her experience, which is extensive. Uh Sergeant Davis has thirty-five years of police experience with the Montgomery County Police Department, thirty years of which were dedicated to the K nine section. Over the course of her K nine career, she worked six different dogs, that means she handled six different uh dogs. All of her patrol dogs were cross-trained, trained for detection, her last K nine partner Gabby was an explosive and firearms detector as well. Uh then Officer Davis was an active participant in local and national certification competitions, taking top rank in many of the trials. She also served on reason three in the National Executive Board of the United States Police K nine Association for two thousand twelve to two thousand nine. Additionally, she earned national judging certification for patrol and detection and national training certifications from the USPCA. In nineteen ninety-nine, then Officer Davis began creating K nine teams, in this role, she was responsible for training several K nine teams in patrol and detection. Two thousand eight, she was assigned as head trainer to the Montgomery County Police K nine unit, where she consistently managed thirty to forty K nine teams. In both basic and maintenance training. In this role, her primary mission was to standardize methodology and develop philosophy that embraced scientific and progressive modalities. Sergeant Davis was also tasked with developing and implementing an annual mandatory patrol certification test for all K nine units in partic, in participating allied agencies. She also developed and implemented a firearms detection training program. When she was promoted in two thousand fourteen, she took over a role as the K nine supervisor, this role was developed. Uh to strengthen and codify the leadership and accountability of the K nine training program, in this role, she was responsible for curriculum development of both patrol and detection. Schools, administrative training, administrative training, selection and candidate of, of candidate officers and dogs and addressing remediation problems and coordinated training and schedules. Uh she was also responsible for the acquisition of training and equipment, uh she acquired and managed training aids and narcotics and so on and so forth. Over the course of her career, Sergeant Davis trained over a hundred and eight patrol K nine teams and fifteen-four detector teams. To include several of our teams, uh she's a public, published contributor at Police K nine magazine. And she's presented in several national K nine seminars, seminars. Uh she is a subject matter expert in the area of K nine and we are pleased to have Sergeant Davis with us this evening to provide an overview of our K nine teams and training and to answer any questions you may have. With that, I'm honored to welcome up Sergeant Davis.
That, that made me tired a little bit, it's very honored to be here to speak to you tonight. Uh about something that obviously meant a great deal to me in my life, a thirty-five year career in policing with most of it dedicated to. Improving, managing and working with police dogs for the benefit of the community. I think the one thing I can offer tonight maybe is some perspective about uh where we were and where we are. Because in nineteen ninety-one, when I started this job, much different rules, different men, mental attitudes, different culture. About the use of the police dog versus where we are now. And I kind of hope that I had a very big influence on the change that came to pass in that upgrade of culture in the community of K nines. I think it's important to note that K nines, you know, we talk a lot about the part that is so dynamic and so. It emotes a great deal of, of feelings when you talk about a dog engaging a person and having that dog bite and apprehend that person. But uh the reality of our work is that more than ninety-nine percent of what we do has nothing to do with the forced option side of their job. Ninety-nine percent of the work that we do has everything to do with using that dog as a locating tool. And what I can tell you is that the police dog offers to us, to our community. A vision into a part of the world that none of us can see, which is scent and odor. It is a part of our environment that they detect very well and they can tell us ahead of time when we are in danger. And this is what they offer to the police community as a safety tool. I've been on many scenes and I've worked my dog in many places and I can tell you that there was probably the most. Substantial event for me in my career was in two thousand three, when you might have known or heard of the Kyle Olinger shooting, when one of our officers was shot. And wounded severely, not killed, but it was my job as a handler to deploy for that incident. And because of the training that I did and because of the support that we received from not only the police department. But also the Montgomery County Council and, and your condition, it would be you people right up here. Two of the three suspects that were involved in that incident were apprehended, it was, ended very quickly. And very safely without further injury to other officers and very minor injury to the suspects involved. And I felt like what I had done in my career to get ready for that point was very substantial and important. And I, I think what we miss when we're discussing dogs is that. We look at all the things that it takes to make one happen or to bring one to service. But we don't think about how much they offer to us in the service that they do provide. And when they are providing service, there is a time management issue that comes into play. If you ask for a police dog to come and search a building where somebody has broken into and, and possibly um committed a felony. The dog can clear that building much faster with less personnel. And get those people back into service a lot faster than you would if you didn't have access to that service. There's many other occasions where searches are expedited because the dog teams are deployed. To make things happen faster and get your officers back out on the street working sooner. I was responsible for maintaining or for offering the training for most of your K nine teams. They went through sixteen weeks of rigorous work and I hope what I did when I was training them was install. A sense of very deep responsibility in their management of that dog. Just like we have very deep responsibility in the management of our other tools uh that we carry, including our firearm. And, and hope that they recognize that they had to be able to answer for the choices that they made when they deployed their dog. Those uh criteria are very well set, so Graham versus Connor decision tells you, you have to consider the severity of the crime. You have to consider the threat that is posed to the officers and to other people. And you have to consider whether or not the suspect is actively evading arrest by flight or concealment. And other factors that we consider when we're using our dogs also includes how old is the person, or how old is, how likely is that this person is a young person? And so the responsibility is very high for these officers and they recognize that they have to manage these dogs with great. Control and great conservative approach. If there is a decision to be made about whether or not that dog is a forced option or needs to be used as a forced option. The decision is made yes or no by the handler, not by the dog. And the decision is made yes or no because it is the best choice in that place and time to make sure that. And the person or persons are apprehended with the least amount of uh. If you, you can say damage if you wish, but with the best safety for everybody involved. And there are, there are occasions where that makes the best sense. And where the police dog is in fact a diminisher of the level of force that is used in some of those situations. Without the dog's ability to make that connection and to quickly apprehend somebody, there is oftentimes an escalation by other officers. Or, or could be an escalation. is oftentimes an escalation by other officers or could be an escalation into a deadly force situation that didn't need to happen. I do want to take a little bit of time to address one particular point that Ms. Lopez mentioned in her presentation. With all due respect, the representation about the pressure that a dog exerts in their bite was really very high. I have done research myself into what the number is, and, you know, the number that she mentioned, twelve hundred to two thousand pounds per square inch, is extremely high. The research that I've done reflects that, you know, a dog's bite is typically somewhere between two hundred and three hundred now PSI. Now, whether or not those numbers mean a lot to you, I don't know, but it was an important point to me to let you know. I think I've hit most of my points here. I know that you can, you have the leverage and the ability to make a decision about whether or not the dogs are necessary or worth the investment, but if you can say that dogs are not essential, I can tell you that they are extraordinarily beneficial and that they do a great deal of good for the officers that you put out there and ask to protect the people in this community. And they are another layer of offered protection to those officers, and they give them a chance to know ahead of time whether or not they are in peril and how they can address that I don't know if there's anything that you guys have questions for me. I don't want to keep you. I know it's a very long night for everybody here, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Smith has his light on, and then DeBala.
So, thank you for your remark, Sergeant. Thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
So, you mentioned that the dog is an option for officers, and if you don't use the dog, then there's a potential for more extreme or deadly service or a deadly.
Force.
Yes, deadly force can result. Is there data that supports that, or is that just what you have seen in your time as an officer?
I believe in San Diego, they did a study, they increased the level, the number of their police dogs in their department by double, and they saw a huge reduction in the deadly force encounters because of it. I think that was the one study that I can reference for you, but I can tell you, in my experience, the presence of the dog has a tendency to calm situations a lot faster than they oftentimes would be otherwise, just officer against suspect. A police K-9 warning is a required element of our work, and when the warning is issued, it is specific and it is very clear, and most frequently, very oftentimes, people are willing to surrender to that because they recognize that there is an option for the dog's use, and that is a de-escalation if I ever heard one.
So, has there ever been any study to show the psychological impact of a suspect being bitten by a dog, if there is any?
I don't know of one, sir. There may have been, but I don't know of one specifically.
And so, let's say that, like, you were on the job, you released your dog a hundred times, right? How many of those were for a suspect that was black or brown?
In my career?
Yes.
A hundred is very high. The number of engagements that I probably have been responsible for over the course of my career is probably in the more like fifty range.
Okay, let's say fifty.
Percentage, I would be guessing. I would absolutely be guessing, and I don't have a statistic for it. I do, I can tell you that some of the people were African-American, some of them were white Americans, and I don't believe I've ever encountered a female, so they were all males.
And of that fifty, how many were actually bit by the dog?
So, the number that I'm telling you, fifty, those are bite apprehensions. If you want to know the number of apprehensions that I've had in my career that were not bite apprehensions, we're in the now upper tenfold of that, because most of the time there is an opportunity to say, hey, you should come out because I have the dog, and if you don't come out, I will use the dog to apprehend. And at that point, the person generally surrenders. And that's, I think, the beauty of knowing well ahead of time where your suspect is. That's what the dog tells us. That's their greatest gift to us.
And one final question. You know, we had the incident in the city Friday. Can you walk us through how the dog would have been deployed in that example?
I don't, I don't have any specifics about Friday's event, so I couldn't speak to exactly what happened.
I can touch on that. So, we had two different active scenes on Friday night. We had one where the shooting occurred. The first dog that responded was from the Sheriff's Department. They did a track from the location to track suspects from that location. The second dog, or two dogs, were there when we cornered the suspect in an apartment, and we contained that apartment for several hours. Why, when we made entry, we had the dog on the perimeter. The dog was barking. The individual inside knew that there was a K-9 outside. I believe that it had a lot to do with the individual giving up. Now, our officers did, had great tactics in getting in the building and so on and so forth, but we had K-9 on both locations. I believe K-9 may have been used for an article search as well at the second site for looking for a gun before we found it in the actual, in the residence that he broke into.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yes. Thank you very much for, Sergeant, for coming out.
Very welcome.
And sharing your expertise with us. It's been really interesting, and I very much appreciate it.
Absolutely. I'm happy.
So, I had, I had two kinds of, two questions. Let you choose how you want to follow up. So, one is a point that our resident made earlier about smaller communities. So, Montgomery County is huge, Tacoma Park is small, and what experience you've had in training and helping smaller communities to manage a K-9 program. And then, the second question is, you referred to all these other uses besides apprehension, and the police chief just did as well, search and tracking and all of those other things. So, can you speak to, a little more to that, since you said that that's the lion's share of what, the dog's share of what dogs do?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, I have assisted with or trained local jurisdictions for Gaithersburg City, Rockville City, Montgomery side of the park police, Tacoma Park, Leesburg, Martinsburg, Virginia, maybe a couple other smaller included jurisdictions. Most of them are one or two dog units, and they operate inside of Montgomery County, essentially. And so, the beauty of the work, the collaborative work between us and the smaller jurisdictions is that there is a more consistent oversight of the programs. There's a uniformity in the training methodologies, and the handlers get to know each other better, and they understand each other's dogs better. And so, there can be much more interaction at scenes with other unit officers. So, the other night, it was Montgomery County and the Sheriff's Office that came to help. But on any given night, we might need to come apart to come and help us in Silver Spring, and we could say, hey, we know this person, Christian is one of the persons that I knew, Christian Peterson, who was a handler, and I'd say, hey, Christian, we're going to run this track, can you back me up? Or, I know your dog can do this really well, will you do this article search? And so, that interactive and the collaborative side of it is, I think, is very good. And I think one of the things that is, one of the things the community can do better and has been doing much better over the thirty years that I was involved with is reaching out and interacting and networking, not only locally but nationally. And I think that has made the biggest difference in the improvement of services to the communities that we serve. So, what are some of the other things that the dogs do? The lion's share or the dog's share part of the work that we do in deployments are tracking, searching open spaces for either suspects or missing people, and searching for evidence at crime scenes, clearing building spaces that are deemed to be, have a possibility of a dangerous person inside, and also all the detector work that goes on for either narcotics, explosives, or firearms. Those are all the deployments that are away from and the most of the work that we do besides criminal apprehension. There's also interaction sometimes with the SWAT units, we serve to support them also on their perimeters, but that's, I'd say, probably goes more into the apprehension side of things. It's not as frequent. Did that get everything? Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Circe.
Great. Thank you so much for coming out and staying to this late hour and listening to our budget.
It is late. I'm retired. I'm so used to going to bed around seven o'clock. I'm a little tired.
I'm so sorry. But, you know, this presentation has been really helpful in addition to the, you know, the comments that we heard earlier, and, you know, I'm still a little bit conflicted, right?
Sure.
Which, you know, makes sense because it's not, there's so many areas of gray in terms of the usage. One of the things that you just mentioned is the apprehension piece versus like searches and those other functions. So, to what extent have you ever seen departments that decide to not use dogs for apprehension purposes, but to use dogs for those other functions? Or is it, it doesn't make sense because the vast majority of the function, you know, most of the time it's used for apprehension purposes?
Absolutely, I've seen it. Frederick County Sheriff's Office has transitioned to that particular work plan. The, there are, obviously, there are, it appears to feel very good, you know, now we're using the dogs just for this, never for this. I guess the one caution that I would place in the decision-making process is horses kick, cats scratch, and dogs bite. And whether you have control over that function is up to you. If the dog is out there and something happens and the handler has never been trained to manage a dog in a situation where they have been put to the place where they believe they need to protect themselves, and they act in a way that is not a trained function, then you, then you could, you know, experience some issues as far as liabilities go. I'm much more, I'm much more supportive of having those dogs be, understand that there is a time and a place for that behavior and that it is under the handler's control, and that the handler can, in fact, recognize when the dog is in a place where he's in an elevated state and choose to manage him in a different way. And that is the responsibility that I hope that I injected into my people that I trained because I recognize that to the general public, it is a very difficult thing to understand or to agree even with using animals or a dog to catch somebody and stop them. And I get that. I really do. And I think that, I think that it's, it is, we can be our own worst enemies if we do not recognize that and acknowledge it, and then also manage in a way that is appropriate. Because I can tell you, there have been many times where that my dog has kept me from being hurt because he could protect me, and I was working by myself. That's never good, but back in the day, that's what we used to do as handlers. We were always solo, and we were out there running, and the dog had to act to help us as a backup officer. Now, we recognize that that's not the best choice. Handlers deploy with other officers, but my point being is that it is definitely a possibility, but it's something to consider as far as wanting to be able to manage that particular behavior because dogs will do it, and they do know how to do it. They don't need us to teach them.
No, that's really helpful, and it kind of goes into the next question around training. Because, you know, sometimes, I have a dog, he's a bit of a brat, and I could totally blame myself, right? If you don't handle an animal the right way or teach them the right way, and you're consistent in your training, they will just react, right? So, what are your thoughts in terms of training for handlers and how that process, and I know that you're probably familiar with the city of Tacoma Park's approach, but, you know, ways in which we may be able to, for example, if we wanted to separate that function, like use the dogs for the search functions where time is of the essence, and that's really critical, but still needing to be able, because an animal is an animal, to make sure that we are properly training our officers so that if there was some ever, ever a case where you're on a search, someone comes up and the handler knows what to do. Have you had any thoughts around training policies or are we pretty set with, in terms of the curriculum that we currently use or that others within the county? Have you heard of any changes to dog handler trainings or anything like that that we may want to keep in mind?
Well, I can tell you that training has to evolve. It has to evolve every time that you're, every time I did a school, a sixteen-week school, the training was evolving because if you don't evolve, you devolve. And to be honest, I understand your point. Yes, dogs are dogs, but they're also really remarkably responsive to the correct type of influence as far as training goes. And if you know how to use what it is that they want to do to your benefit to get them to execute certain behaviors, then, then you see a more resilient response out of the animal. That doesn't come easily to many people. That's why they need to be in a program where there's a lot of support. If they're by themselves and they're isolated, they're going to come up with their own ideas, yeah, but they may not get the best results. And so, interaction is the biggest thing. They have to be involved with other agencies if there are only one or two handlers in their unit. They have to be frequently re-acquainted with or exposed to. So, that would be monthly trainings that include, you know, important vital function like control work, tracking work, da-da-da. But monitoring the training and knowing that your handlers are proficient enough that they can pass their certifications, but also that they can, they can execute in scenario-based training, and you can put some stress on them and they make good decisions, that that's when you can feel with great confidence that you're deploying a team that is proficient. So, I don't know if that helped a lot, but again, I will strongly, I strongly advocate for interactive work and going to national seminars, going to different training sessions that are available locally, and being honest with what your, you know, output is. And I think when you expose yourself to other evaluators, then you get a feedback that's important. If you never do that, then you can always be your own best judge. You're the greatest handler in the world.
Great. And so, I think this actually may be a question for the police chief. So, in the more recent case, we engaged Montgomery County's dogs, and I know that in the past, one of the things that we kind of talked about was, you know, even as a city, even if we wanted to get rid of our K-9s, there are instances where we need dogs, right? So, like, the case on Maple Avenue was one of those instances where we needed that extra support. So, how are our current memorandum, do we have memorandums of understanding? How do we currently, when we need to bring in that outside support in terms of K-9 units? How does that typically work? And then, what are some of the And then what are some of the concerns that we need to keep in mind? Like, we just heard about all the training that needs to happen, and how people need to be engaged, and how it needs to be, so that's another thing that I know that some folks of the Public Safety Task Force is like, okay, well, we don't want dogs. We would probably need to use Montgomery County dogs. But then, you know, you don't have much control over how they're trained or what their officers do. So it's kind of this catch-22. So what do we currently do now when we need to bring in outside units?
That was, a lot of questions loaded into one, but I will try to answer. So I'll give you an example. The incident on Friday night, we used, the sheriff's department was the first available dog. That unit was coming from Germantown. I beat that unit coming from home here to the scene. So that's an example of the delay if we have another unit coming. We have memorandums of understanding for mutual aid with Montgomery County Police, with Park Police, and with the Sheriff's Department. They're probably our primary, and with Rockville City, they're probably our primary response units when we're requesting canine. But if they are not available, we might request Greenbelt, or Hyattsville, or Metro Transit. It is whoever is available. So if we do not have a canine unit, or a canine unit that does apprehension, we would not be providing the Public Safety Delivery Service, I think we need to in this city, if we did not utilize those resources. For example, on that homicide, or on that apprehension on Kennebunk on Friday night. So we still are going to be relying on other agencies. If we're relying on Montgomery County or agencies to get the same training through Montgomery County that Mary Davis provided, we can be confident that they have the same training and responsibilities. But that's not always the case, and we lose command and control of those scenes. So we want to have our own dogs so we have control over all of the things that Sergeant Davis just spoke about. The training, the deployment, the selection of the handler, all of those things. If we now need to utilize outside agencies, we lose that. Like I say, the majority of times, it's going to be an agency that we know. It will be Montgomery County. It will be sheriffs. It will be Rockville City. It will be Park Police. But there are occasions that we've had to call Greenbelt, or Metro Transit, or U.S. Park Police, and Lord knows, we don't know what we're getting. The good thing about the incident on Friday night is when we had two canine officers on the scene on Kennebunk, both of them from different agencies. And as Sergeant Davis said earlier, the familiarity with each of the training and the canine, both of those units knew each other, and they felt comfortable working together. So as I said multiple times, this has multiple moving parts. So we don't fund our canine unit. We decide, we can't, that doesn't mean that we just cannot use canine at all. There are multiple moving parts. So now are you saying that Tacoma Park Police Department cannot use canine at all in their operations? I mean, I think that's crossing the line. It's my job to provide public safety to the citizens of this city, and I've said that multiple times. I take that job very seriously. So I think that's a slippery slope. So as we evaluate, there are multiple layers in which we can do, and I put that in the executive summary that I supplied. We can have a patrol dog. We can have a drug dog. So we need to evaluate, what do we want to do here in the City of Tacoma Park? But understand that we are still need to, going to need to utilize canine. There's going to be a delay in canine responding if we don't have our own, and we're also going to lose potential command and control. So consider all of these things. Like, this is not an on and off switch. It is not. I think that we, this, for the first time since I've been here, we've provided information on this topic. I think that there needs to be a really, really educated thought, well-thought-out process about what do we want in the city. And honestly, I don't think we've really heard from the people that we need to hear from. We always talk about black and brown people and racial equity. I don't, we're not hearing from those people that are victims of crimes where we're going to be utilizing the dogs. We're hearing from people, no offense, that tend to speak for other people when they have not had like life experiences. So we need to be careful that when we evaluate this, that we get the people that have been victims of crimes, or people that maybe have been bitten by a canine. So let's hear from everybody when we're making this decision. And I think that will help us make a much better educated decision. Ask the family who was involved in the homicide. Do you, do you want the Tacoma Park Police to have that tool to apprehend the suspect? We were very fortunate that we had a very astute resident who called in when she saw something suspicious. Had she not done that, we may not have apprehended that suspect. So I cannot stress enough, as we move through this process, let's make sure we're checking every box. I understand completely. It's horrifying. I was bitten by a dog as a young child. I know how that feels. But I, like I say, I understand the importance and the tool, if it's done correctly, correctly. And that's exactly what we're trying to do here in the City of Tacoma Park.
Great. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you so much for the presentations tonight and for all the information.
You're welcome.
It's been very informative and helpful.
I like to talk about it.
I can tell, but it's a good thing. I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if they're more directed towards you or to Chief DeVal. More sort of focused on the decision-making process to use a dog in the first place, and how you get to that point, sort of when that decision is made that you need to utilize a canine, particularly if there isn't one within the city that's easy to call on. So what does that process look like?
So the typical scenes that are canine automatic, somebody has fled a scene, fled on foot, committed a robbery, committed a burglary, committed, you know, any type of crime of violence, that's a definite canine call. The sooner the better, because where you, your jurisdiction is obviously very highly populated, and the sooner the dog can deploy, the better chances that they have at success on those particular deployments. When you have forced entry in a building search situation, those are clearly a dog search scenario. I think it's important that you guys also understand, I'm sorry, that's not very respectful. Counsel understands, that when we do use the dog for search, they have to be where we can see them. It used to be that the dog would get cut loose at a doorway, and you tick-tock wait time and see if you hear any barking, and then if you don't, you call them back and it's over. That's no longer okay, never, never cool, because you cannot interpret a tool that you cannot see. And so, the dog must be in the visual contact with the handler, and we train now on lead searching, most of the time, majority of the time, for any indoor deployments. So I send the dog in, he checks 30 feet in front of me, I can see him. He says no. I go, okay, now we can move up and we can clear. We can move up and we can clear. That's much safer for everybody, because sometimes people are in buildings they're not supposed to be, but they belong, essentially. So those two are big ones. And then anytime there's something that the officers want us to help them find that they can't find themselves, shooting scenes, casings, discarded firearms, any type of evidence that could have been discarded during a flight, obviously detection for narcotics or for explosives. So those are essentially the bigger, those are the, it's a canine call. Is there canine available? Can we get one here? How fast can we get them here?
And on the point regarding the on-lead search, in the documentation that we received, there was some information about, I'm not sure if I'm remembering the terms correctly, but it was the bark, like a bark and apprehend versus a bite and apprehend, and it seemed like one of those required a lead, the dog to be on a lead? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah. So the terms are bark and hold, and just essentially what that means is, is that the dog is supposed to, when they find something or somebody, they're supposed to stand off and just bark at them. That's nice to hear. In theory, I can tell you, in practice, it is putting the onus of the decision about engagement on the dog, not on the handler. Because if that person then acts aggressively towards the dog, then he's allowed to engage. But if he doesn't act aggressively, then the dog's not allowed to engage. So you see how that can put way too much pressure on the animal as far as, well, should I have done that? What was he doing? Is that an aggression? It's find and bite, or find and engage are dog teams that are, the handler makes a decision. Right now, I need to make sure that this dog is not going to engage whenever we find somebody, or he, we are in a position where now we have issued a warning, we know that there's somebody right here, the safest way for everybody is for me to put the dog in there, let him engage quickly, and then take that person into custody. So the handler's making all those decisions. It's not the dog's choice. We say do, the dog does. When it's over, it's over, and that's it. I don't know, does that help?
It does, yeah. And do you find that there are situations where someone is so afraid of the dog that they are afraid to surrender to police?
Yes.
And how?
Lots of times.
How do you handle that? Does that escalate things to the point where then they end up getting bitten, or does that, how do you de-escalate that?
And again, so let's say, for example, I'm searching this area, and the dog alerts, there's somebody hiding behind where you are sitting right now. I can tell that there's somebody there, probably back here. I'm going to say to my backup officers, we have contact. Now we need to be tactical. I'm going to control the dog. We're going to take positions. Do you have eyes on this guy? Yes. What's he doing? He's just sitting there shaking. Can you see his hands? Yes. Well, let's talk to him. And we have all the time in the world, right? Because he's not going anywhere. That's the process by which you make a decision about whether or not that person is concealing out of fear or concealing because they intend to hurt you if you get closer. And so, you know, that's the difference between 1990, which was referenced, I think, in Ms. Lopez's article, a study that was generated for the LAPD from 1988 to 1990, their bites and the severity of their bites. That, that agency is what triggered the evolution of canine across the country because of the way that they were deploying then, and how we knew we needed to get better and do differently. So to refer to that particular study, I thought was a little unfair, but it's, I think it's important to recognize that the handlers, the handlers know that they are extremely liable for that dog's behavior, and that they don't want to sit in court managing themselves over three years because of a bad engagement. They know that they have a high level of responsibility, not just to the person that they're locating, but to all of you and to the people that they protect. And so, that's the kind of person that you need to select, and that's the kind of person that you need to put behind a dog. I do have a little historical kind of background for, food for thought, because I also study a lot of case law, and a lot of case law has come out of Tacoma Park regarding canine. The first one was Cop v. Wing, and it was in the 80s. It was the precursor to the first case where it was determined that it is important and necessarily and required that you issue a canine warning before you deploy a dog for an engagement. That was the first one. The second one was Vathikans versus Prince George's County, but it was a Tacoma Park deployment, and I think it's when, was part of Tacoma Park, where a woman was in her house, and the dog went in, and he was off lead, and he engaged this woman who was sleeping in her house, in her face, it was terrible. It was another canine warning case. And then the third one was the Stephanie Moore case, which a woman, a female handler from Prince George's County went to jail for 10 years for her, ultimately, for the deployment on a burglar coming down off of a rooftop in Tacoma Park. And I kind of was, I was curious, actually, if the council recognized that there was no command and control over what was happening in your town, and that's why canine became part of your police department, so you could control it. But that was just a kind of little historical background.
Thank you. I have one final question, and this might be more for Chief DeVal. This is more of a procedural question, I guess. I noticed in the documents that we got, it said that other agencies would also be able to deploy canines in Tacoma Park for incidents originating in other jurisdictions. Is that, I wasn't clear on whether that would be something that would be the case now already, or if that's the case if we didn't have our own canine and we had an MOU with others?
That's a good question. It is absolutely the case now. So if the Maryland State Police had a chase into Tacoma Park, that terminated in Tacoma Park, and they had a canine, they could deploy it in our city. We've had occasion where Montgomery County Police has had chases that ended, vehicle chases that ended in Tacoma Park, and they deployed their canine. So regardless of what we do, that outside element is going to be there. And I think we've talked about it, that in the context of warrants as well. You know, anyone can come into our city and serve a warrant. So we need to understand that that element, regardless of what we do, is still going to be there.
And does the opposite apply as well? Our officers could go into another jurisdiction?
Technically, yes. If we had an incident that started, say, in Tacoma Park, and it ended up in Prince George's County or somewhere else, yes, we absolutely could deploy.
Okay. Thank you for all of the information. I will say, I continue to have a lot of concerns about having the canine here. I'm not sure it's something I can support, but I feel much more confident about the way that you have been, have been thinking this through and deploying them and doing the trainings based on this conversation. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Siemens and then Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your presentation tonight. I was really interested to hear all that until you got up to the part where you said you were going to talk about history. And I realized that that's where I began, and the subject was, back in the 1990s, in fact, it was the second case that you just mentioned a minute ago, that really raised my concern of what was happening here in Tacoma Park and in the neighboring communities at that, at that point in time. And so I started to learn about canine and what the impact is on the community. And actually, it's kind of funny. We had one dog at that time in Tacoma Park. I joined the council shortly after that, 1999.
Scott McCauley.
Right, Scott McCauley had his dog, and that was the only one that we had. But what I had learned, as I talked to Scott and other people, is that basically what you ran through, and I'm not going to run through it again and put my colleagues to sleep here, but it's, dogs are trained differently, and they're controlled differently. And what I learned was that it's, it's the jurisdiction that has the dog, it really controls the dog, and decides how that dog's going to be used, how it's going to be trained, what it's trained to do and what it's trained not to do. And so I, as I was on the council at that time, advocated for having a dog per shift, so that we had three shifts, we would make sure we would have our dog at the scene when we needed a canine. And I will say, before that point in time, there were a number of just egregious incidents, and you mentioned a couple of them. And I think that from the time we ended up having our own dogs and training our dogs the way we wanted them to be done, trained, and how they wanted to handle, and, you know, bite and hold was one of the things that was very different than what the surrounding jurisdictions were doing at that time. That I think the number of outrageous incidents dropped down to almost nothing, and sadly, it was the recent incident that was mentioned this evening, was a bad incident, shouldn't have happened, but it did. It did, and there's probably reasons that we could identify of why that happened, you know, whether it was the way the dog was trained, the way the, you know, whether the right officer was in control of that dog, or whether the officer was in control of the dog at all. You know, it was mistakes that were going to be possible no matter what. But you need to have good management, and you need to have the accountability, and you need to have the policy that establishes how dogs are to be used in this community and how they're not to be used. And I, as you can guess, I strongly support us having the canine. I've seen the value of having a dog, and, you know, there's so many different aspects of canine that it gives the council a great deal of latitude in deciding, you know, what we should do and what we should not do, and how we should do it, and what the consequences are if we don't get what we want.
Understood.
So I...
Understood.
So I let my colleagues go on now.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you and thank you Sergeant Davis and Chief DeVal for the information. And I can see that it's something that you take very seriously. You know, I think it's possible for there to be something that can work really well often and still have, in other ways, negative or harmful connotations or send negative harmful messages. And I, I sincerely believe the chief, when he says, I'd say to you directly, chief, that you're committed to not engaging in any type of activity that would be contributing in some negative way to, to racial equity. And I accept and believe that when you say it. You know, we do have the task force that we appointed to look into some of these issues and a majority of that task force did recommend getting rid of it. And I guess I have to say, I mean, for agents or for a jurisdiction our size, I'm not sure I see why we would need to have it all the time. And it does appear, just based on what you described about the most recent incident, that particularly with officers who come out of the training that Sergeant Davis was involved in, whether you trained them specifically, I don't know, but it does seem as if-
I'm sure I did.
Yeah, okay. Well, it does seem as if-
Although now I have, I'm, I'm out of the picture, so.
Right. But it does seem as if what they did was, was appropriate and helpful to us. And so, to me, just putting it in the overall context, recognizing that it is, it can be beneficial, recognizing as, as you explained, Chief, that, and maybe the, at least one of the, or two of the incidents that Councilmember Siemens talked about, did sort of demonstrate this point that we might not have control. To me, it just still seems like the number of instances in which we would need it are small enough and the overall impression it gives and the negativity that results when there is a bad incident, all that to me, taking it on balance, for me, weighs against us continuing to do it. So I would not support it, but I understand my colleagues may not agree with me.
If I can just say, I, you said that there are not enough incidents. I would say again, once to the victim of these crimes, you, if you make this decision, you're taking away a tool for us to apprehend violent offenders, people that shoot people in cold blood in the middle of afternoon, a block from the police station. Understand that, that we are taking away that tool. The delay in getting the canine from Germantown could have potentially stopped us from apprehending the people that left on foot because of all the cross-traffic that was created in the timeframe in which that occurred. So the incidents we have, and I think, I think people don't understand, that we are surrounded by, by areas that have very, very high crime rates. And we've had serious incidents here. And when we have these serious incidents, I truly believe, as your police chief, that we need these tools. I think if you look at the 30 some odd years of the Tacoma Park Police Department, we've had one, and I say one, bite, horrific bite, and it was an accidental bite. And as I've said previously, it's a personal matter, but I would be more than happy to speak in detail about that incident and about things we've done to put in place to make sure that does not happen again. So I just want to go on record saying that, that if we decide not to do this, we are not going to have a tool that we control and that we can potentially get. And I, and again, yes, we were very fortunate that we were able to get allied agencies that were trained, both of them trained under Sergeant Davis, but that's not always the case. It may be Metro Transit, it may be Greenbelt, it may be Hyattsville, it may be another jurisdiction. So as we look through this process, I say again, let's reach out to the people that are impacted by these crimes and decide if, if, if they don't want canine, I think their voice should be heard. If they do, I think their voice should be heard. So, and if we evaluate just canine in general, consider the other uses of canine, not just saying we're not going to use licensed canine. So we have a missing five-year-old. Are we going to say, okay, well, sorry, we don't have a search and rescue dog to help you find that five-year-old? So we need to evaluate what we're doing in this context. And that's why I say it has multiple moving parts and it's not going to be decided tonight, but please consider all them before making a decision that I think will impact the public service delivery here in Tacoma Park.
Councilmember DeVal.
Yeah, before you sit down or maybe after you come back, so I've heard you say twice that you think we should hear from a variety of people. So how, what would you, do you have a recommendation about how we would go about doing that? Or whether the police department would organize that or the public police advisory board or ask the task force to do it? What are you thinking?
I, I will say this, this, this issue is not unique, or this problem is not unique to this issue.
Sure.
We as a city do not hear enough from the people that are impacted on the topics that we are discussing. We hear from a small minority that are very loud, but we don't hear from the people that we need to hear from. So I wish I had a crystal ball and I could say, this is the way we're going to find those, those people that have been impacted. I don't know how we're going to do that, but, but let me just say this and repeat what I said earlier. This is not a police department issue, this is not a canine, this is a city in general issue. So we need to figure out how do we reach out to those people in general, not just on this topic, but all of the topics. So I, I wish I had an answer to that. We can obviously work through some of the, some of the cases that we've had and work through our victim witness coordinator to see if we can have some of those, some of those victims possibly become and speak to council. That might be best to be done in closed session if we're talking in context of what happened in the 2018 incident. I really don't want to expose some of the victims publicly to this. So if we do that, do that type of engagement, I would highly recommend that we do it in closed session.
Thank you. Anything else? Great. Just a couple of questions I had. If, if we did have a canine unit here, in some of the examples, it, it seemed like it would also be likely that other canines may come in to assist in times. And I think Sergeant Davis, you talked about how it's good for them to work together, to interact and things like that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that would be part of, I guess-
I can tell you it's a normal course of order. Like if I was working Silver Spring District, there's a number of occasions where Tacoma Park is asking for canine, can you assist? And the reason for that is even, you know, it's important to recognize that one person cannot cover 24/7/365. One canine team cannot do that. You guys know their work schedule. And, you know, either the handler can get sick or the dog can get hurt or something can happen that puts that, that team out of service. But there is, there's always been interactive deployment, Tacoma Park coming to help Silver Spring, Silver Spring helping Tacoma Park and Montgomery coming to help Tacoma Park, so.
And so in those instances, who, I guess I'm trying to understand the, before we were talking about-
The process, how it goes?
Yeah, because, you know-
It's a radio call, I mean essentially-
No, no, I guess, but, but when they're here in the city, there was concern, as Councilmember Siemens raised it, I think you and the chief raised it as well, if we don't have our own canine, you know, we're relying on somebody else coming in.
Correct.
But it sounds like we rely, we have other people coming in all the time, even if we did have our own canine.
Right, but the, I guess the differentiation in, in that particular instance is that Montgomery and Tacoma train together. We deployed on the same, in the same policy essentially, or similar policy. And the, the requirements for behavior on the handler's part are fully understood between both jurisdictions in that situation. The, there is not the same type of understanding if a Washington DC canine team came up or someone from Prince George's, they have a different deployment policy. Some of them may not even deploy in other jurisdictions. So it's, I guess the benefit of knowing each other is the point that I was making and the fact that, yes, you would have cross deployment, but to never have your own team and to always be depending on other agencies would mean that other people who don't, who never trained with you, essentially at this point, would be coming in and doing, and I'm not saying they'd be acting recklessly, they're all handlers that have responsibility and recognize that it's an important thing to be conservative. But I can tell you too that, you know, the strain of personnel issues is a strain that comes down to every special unit. And in Montgomery County, the canine unit is much less in numbers right now than it was when I was, when it was at its strongest, at 22 handlers. Now we're, I believe they're down to 15, 13 or 15. And that's kind of across the board. The availability of other teams is going to be diminished as well. So the asset is not going to be as easy or as quickly accessible if you don't have your own. That's kind of common sense.
Yeah. I guess it would be helpful too, as I think Sergeant Davis, as I listened to you and then Chief, just thinking about, you know, the trainings and the responsibility and things, it does seem pretty involved, right? If it's going to be a successful program. And I think more information on that, flushing that out would be beneficial. And, you know, I, I hear you, Chief, regarding when we get public input and I think that was one of the reasons why we set up the Public Safety Task Force and worked really hard to get a cross-section of residents who live in the city. And some of whom have been victims of crime, some who aren't, you know, it was a group of people. So, but I will, I will say that I think in this instance, looking at some of our public safety issues, the council was very intentional to form the Public Safety Task Force and they took on a lot of issues. And this is one that we want to go more in-depth on, but I do think that was something that the council was very intentional about in saying that we needed to really make sure that we were reaching out to members of our community that we did not hear from very often. And I would say that many of the members, not all of them, who served on that task force were not ones that we hear from all the time. So, you know, and I think it's a continuing conversation we have and I do believe we need to broaden our engagement in the city, but it was very intentional for that task force.
I, I agree with the, with the cross-section of diversity within the task force, but when we had the public engagement sessions, we had four, six, eight people join. So I, I think that was a problem. And, and when you created the reimagining Public Safety Task Force, what you got is people that wanted to reimagine public safety. You didn't get a lot of people that were good with what we were delivering. And that's not bad. As I said at the beginning, we were very open to finding a, a better way to do public safety here in Tacoma Park and taking a holistic view of that. But I think the one thing that the task force also highlighted was the lack of participation on those public forums. And, and the ones I tuned into, it, once again, it was the same people with the same comments. It was very few people that, that I think that we need to get to. So I, I'm going to say it a third time, but I will say it a third time. We need to find a way as a city to engage those people. And I know that, that City Manager Fox and others are looking at ways, but until we do that, we're not going to get a, an accurate perspective of, of what our residents truly feel. And I think that's critical on, on all topics, whether it's sidewalks, police, trees, climate, racial equity, you name it, so.
Great. Thank you. Thank you Sergeant Davis for being here. I think we have a lot of information to take in on this topic. I will confer with my colleagues and see how they'd like to proceed on this. So thank you very much and we can move on to license plate readers.
Thank you so much to Sergeant Davis. I realize as a retiree, she came here on her own and I really appreciate her contributions. They were very, very helpful. In regards to license plate readers, I think there's a lot of misconception about what license plate readers can and cannot do. They basically, and I sent a frequently asked questions and kind of an overview of our program and that's part of the packet. But I, I think that, that there's a misunderstanding that these are, these have facial recognition technology, that they're taking video or pictures of people walking down the street. That's not what they're doing, not what they do. They take infrared pictures of license plates. They are able to, for us to apprehend or to detect carjacking vehicles, vehicles involved in homicides, burglaries, et cetera. So this evening, I have several staff members, I have Sergeant Kyle Robison from our Traffic Division that's going to give a Reader's Digest version of LPRs. And we also, as I said earlier, First Sergeant Keith Johnson from the Maryland State Police that's going to talk about the data retention and what MCAT does with the information. So I'll bring up Sergeant Robison now to give a brief overview. And he didn't get the message on the front row, sorry.
Hi, good evening. So I'm here to talk to you about license plate readers. So what is a license plate reader? A license plate reader is like the chief said, it's there to read license plates. It's using infrared light or ambient light and getting off of the reflection off of the license plate. And it's able to put together the letters and the numbers of the license plate and put it into our mobile data computer. So the software with the LPR system is updated twice daily with a hot list. A hot list will include anything from felony vehicles, stolen vehicles, missing persons, amber alerts, silver alerts, vehicles associated with missing persons and even like suspended registration for emissions or no insurance, things like that. The hot list is there because the system will read off of that list almost immediately. It takes about maybe one, two seconds to get a read. In cases where we have to ask our dispatcher for a reading or a tag check, it would take anywhere from maybe like 10 to 15 seconds to up to maybe five minutes because you never know what's going on in the city and you don't want to take up all that airtime with the radio. Currently, right now, we have three LPRs in our fleet. We have three that are, I'm sorry, four LPRs. We have three that are mobile systems which are mounted on our vehicles. And we have one stationary LPR system that is in the signboard, our electronic signboard that we use, but it has not worked since, since I've taken over. So that would be one thing that we'd have to take a look at. So right now, we have one officer that is able to use the LPR system. It's Corporal Sims. Currently, he's the only one that's been through the approved training through MCAT and MSP. All of our officers to use the system need to be certified through MCAT and MSP or certified by another officer that is certified, certified to be a trainer, that is. So kind of going off of the, my list, but what, the information that's captured when the tag readers read the license plate is you get the GPS data from where the tag was read. You get the date, the time and a camera serial number. And then it takes all that information, runs it through the hot list, but nothing comes up, just goes into the computer and says it's been read. And then, so none of the information that we gather is kept here. All of our information is stored, we have, sorry, our license plates information is stored on our MDTs for one day. After that, it's automatically uploaded to MCAT. I'll let Sergeant Johnson talk more about that. And then once the data is uploaded to MCAT, anybody that wants any kind of information from there needs to submit a written request and Sergeant Johnson can provide more information on that. Basically, the goal of our LPR program is to collect and store vehicle information in effort to increase the detection of stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, find more missing people, find amber alerts, silver alerts. We have a very small city, but we also have a highly trafficked city. We have DC, we have Hyattsville, Silver Spring, all right around us. And with New Hampshire Avenue, it's one of the main thoroughfares, so that gets upwards of over 25,000 cars a day. Just having, having an officer that's able- having an officer that's able to drive up and down New Hampshire Avenue and just have to run all the license plates that run along the side of the cars um, is very beneficial. So um, as I said, we have three mounted LPRs on our vehicles, and we have one stationary one. Those, the three that are mounted on our vehicles are probably at least ten years old. They are bit and piece to put together to try to get it to a working order. Um, I know Sergeant Johnson has, we've used him to put our one working one together. And he'll be taking a look at another one that we have coming up here soon. But uh, other than that, Sergeant Johnson, he's available.
Am I coming through at all?
That was, that was here.
I'm trying to talk.
Can you guys hear me? I'm unmuted.
I think, yeah.
There we go. I'm trying to speak. Can you guys hear me?
Break it down.
There's a, there's a mute button on. I can't, I don't think you hear me.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, good. So I'm Detective Sergeant Johnson from uh, the Maryland State Police. Currently assigned to the Maryland Coordination Analysis Center. And the LPR program actually belongs to MCAC, not the Maryland State Police. So as we go through it, all the data which Sergeant Robson was talking about, we talk about that year policy. We keep data for one year at MCAC. And we limit access. A lot of times we have the privacy access to it. And law enforcement officers, the only one who can request the data or a criminal analyst who works for the agency. But in order to do that, they actually have to provide us documentation that they have a legitimate law enforcement purpose to use the data. So we are restricted to the data. I saw in your packet, you guys had copies of the Public Safety Article uh, three, five, zero, nine, which limits our data. Not only that, MCAC, we also follow federal guidelines under CRF. It'd be twenty-eight CRF Part uh, twenty-three, which is federal guidelines for databases for intelligence, because we're federal task force. Additionally, the other policy information we use, the Bureau of Justice has a LPR policy, uh, which actually was helped drafted by Fusion Centers throughout Maryland, uh, and MCAC did a lot of work in the policy. So in the policy addresses privacy issues, that's our primary concern is privacy. And even with the Public Safety Article uh, three, five, zero, nine, it was drafted in coordination with the ACLU. And um, believe now US Representative uh, Jamie Raskin was instrumental in developing our policy. Maryland is one of fourteen states that actually has an LPR law. So MCAC takes the uh, program seriously. Uh, we talk about training. Right now, we do have, we're running a train-to-trainer course this week, so we can train officers from other counties, uh, other municipalities to help teach our program. But for them, they're gonna go through a twenty-four hour course, which includes uh, written tests, practical application, and then us watching them teach back to class uh, Thursday afternoon. So I guess I, I think one of the question, what questions do you guys have for MCAC in the, with your LPR program?
Um, I think I have Councilmember Smith and then, yeah.
Uh, so thank you for the presentation. I was on the council when we first considered the LPRs. So I, I, I guess I don't really understand, are, is the issue that the department needs funding? For
Yes.
The LPRs and some of my colleagues wanted a briefing on it, or?
Yeah, so our current LPR systems are in disrepair. Um, they are old. I mean, it's technology, any technology is older than like five years and sold. Uh, this is older than old. So.
I, I can, I can just touch on that real briefly. Yeah, the, these are in our normal replacement cycle. Um, because as, as Sergeant Robison said, that they are, they are very, very old. Um, I, uh, several council members requested a briefing on the LPRs. I think there was some misunderstanding about what LPRs do and can't do. Uh, this was discussed at a council session months ago. Uh, we committed to not purchasing any until we briefed the council on LPR. So that's where we are now, but this has always been in our normal replacement cycle. Um, it, it's not a new item. Um, it's always been there, but that's why we're here tonight, just to brief the council so they have an understanding of LPRs.
Okay.
Some people, I, I know you have, you've had the briefing because you were on the council at the time, but there are newer council members that don't have that understanding of LPRs, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Ball. Yeah, um, just briefly, thank you very much for being here and for giving us the presentation. Um, so, so you said that if an officer is using this technology, if I understood you, it would pick up a number of license plates, but it would only flag the ones that are on a hot list?
Correct.
So the data that goes to MCAC that um, that's been held for a year with all those privacy restrictions, is that all the license plates that it read or just the ones that are hit?
So you'd like me to answer that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we do collect the normal, what we would consider to be a normal read. If you look at the Public Safety Article uh, three, five, zero, nine, it talks about active data and captured data. But for what you're asking for is captured data. So when it's scanned, we do collect that. That information is not released, uh, generally. So an officer in the car will see it. MCAC will see it. Now, when Sergeant, when Sergeant talked about the data retention on the car, he said, one day, uh, we set the cars up at actually at midnight every night, it purges the data on the vehicle. That way, they, the officer in field has no access to go back and query it. So even the officer who scanned it has no access. Now, at MCAC, those who have access to it are all part of the, a, we're sponsored by the FBI. Each person with access has a top secret clearance. Even with that, I still have to go through every year and conduct an audit of that information. I check to see why they query the tag. They can't just arbitrarily go into system and run a tag. Uh, they have to have a reason to do it. Uh, the same thing as the officer does. And that's part of the audit process that you see in uh, the Public Safety Article, which we submit down to Annapolis each year by March first.
Thank you. That was very, very helpful.
Councilman Costa.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I was one of the people who requested it, so I appreciate all the information. Um, my, my concern was, um, and I think this was not adequately um, laid out in the agenda item, was that there was a recommendation by a majority of the, the task force to not purchase LPRs and not move forward with that. And a minority was interested in having a further discussion on this. So I think it's important that we're having the discussion and appreciate the information. Um, so I have a couple of questions. I, I just want to make sure I understand the program. Um, the first was, I guess in terms of where the, you, you mentioned that there are these three mobile um, units, and then the one that's on the signboard. And what is, what is being proposed to be purchased for, for you? So if we were fully operable, what, what would we have uh, for, for use in FY twenty-three?
You want to talk about that?
We're looking to try to replace some of the vehicle mounted units.
Okay.
So I believe there's one this year and at least one in FY twenty-three.
So would the one on the signboard be replaced, or is that one not being considered?
I'd love to replace that now. We'd have to try to get a new signboard.
Okay. And in terms of usage, are those limited to those vehicles only? So basically, whoever the officers are who use those vehicles are the one, are the only officer to use the, the LPRs, or can it be moved?
Don't, it can be moved, but the only ones who can use the, that equipment is people who've been certified and trained in that equipment. So unless you're an LPR-trained operator, you cannot use that equipment. It's very, very strictly held. We have strict policy on it. Um, LPR and LPR data and the ability to query a tag is handled much like uh, NCIC data, which is our, our criminal database that we use, that it's linked to every officer that uses it. So that's why when they do the yearly audit each year, they can tell who asked for the query, and then we have to put a justification as to why that query is being done. They're mainly uh, officers who are using it on the road are using it to pick up things that are on the hot list, such as uh, amber alert vehicles, silver alert vehicles, carjack vehicles, serious felony vehicles. Investigators, I used to use it all the time in my former agency when I was a criminal investigator, because it can help place vehicles at certain locations where crimes have occurred, and we can build upon that and we can develop suspects with it. So an example would be, um, I had a series of uh, rapes and sexual assaults that were happening in French Georgia County in DC. And through LPR data, through MCAC, I was able to place the vehicle of the suspect at each one of those locations when those rapes were occurring. It gave me an idea of who to look into further as a person of interest, and I was able to develop him as a suspect. He is now in jail because of using MCAC. That's what the investigators want MCAC for. The officers on the street and patrol use it mainly off of that hot list, so that they can de- detect those serious uh, cars that are listed as felony vehicles or recover missing persons or silver alert for people who have dementia or Alzheimer's, things like that.
And in terms of the use of them, is it a situation where the officer is parked along New Hampshire Avenue, let's say, and just running this while doing other paperwork, let's say, or is it, you're kind of driving down the street and they're being operated as you're just doing other work and you're going along? How does it actually work in terms of operating them?
If they're turned on and operating, it doesn't matter if the officer's uh, mobile or stationary. It'll read the tags if it grabs them and picks them up.
Okay. And what about sort of lower level traffic offense or, or registration, um, outdated registration, those types of things? Is it also looking for those, or is it more looking for the warrants or stolen cars or that type of, of offense?
The whole idea of them is to pick up things that are put on the hot list, that the, the more serious, hence it is. Can it pull tag registration information? Yes. It does have that.
Sir, can I interject real quick on that part?
Sure.
For what we pick. So for MBA, from the MBA, we get your suspended drivers uh, who are suspended for uh, times for either warrants through uh, thirty days lapse and not found in a fair court, suspended for points violations, DUI violations. So suspended drivers for vehicles, we only target suspended vehicles. And then the agency itself can have a policy where they will turn off uh, a low-level suspension like a vehicle mission, which is regulatory. But we see a lot of officers will focus on your vehicle suspensions that are related to insurance, which have a high cost to your residence when they're struck by a vehicle has a lack of insurance. Warrants are entered. And then again, with um, missing persons that are entered into the system, or we can do a missing person who has just reported missing, and we get a lot out of Montgomery County, PG County, that we're able to locate within probably fifteen to twenty minutes of the officer contacting this with a tag for an amber alert or a silver alert, and produce that information to um, about four hundred and eighty-five, the five, depending on the time of day, between four hundred and five hundred and fifty LPR readers throughout the state.
Do, do we, thank you for that information. Um, do we have a policy as a city in terms of how, how they are utilized for those? Maybe the, the emissions violations or the, the registration violations, or is that something that they would be used for?
That, that is a discretionary issue with the officer, whether you conduct a traffic stop on those matters. Anything that the officer would do, he has to then corroborate that information through our dispatch through NCIC or MBA meters to make sure that is still pertinent and active information. And then it's up to the officer if he would like to take action on that.
Okay.
Um, before you go, can I, I just want to make, clarify this, because I'm trying to jive it with the work that we're doing on um, not doing discretionary traffic stops for um, you know, other, like, um, sorry, it's getting late. Um, and so I'm trying to figure out, so if Officer Sims is out and he has the license plate reader and it, is he checking things like lack of registration, lack of insurance, and, or are those low-level offenses that we are no longer looking at? Like, what's the policy that we have right now?
As I, as I've stated previously, our focus is on serious traffic offenses. Um, obviously, the, these type of offenses can be regulated. Um, we all know our policy here in the city. Obviously, some of these offenses, suspended driver, et cetera, are serious offenses um, that we would, we would want to apprehend people. We're not out, this isn't reading tag lights out, this isn't reading, not having a uh, you know, a, a license plate affixed to your, to your, to your vehicle. It's not detecting a, an air freshener hanging. So it, it, what, what we have here, mainly, we're looking at serious offenses, amber alerts, um, serious offenses, carjackings, et cetera. That's what we're focused on with this program. So any traffic stops would be consistent with our overall traffic philosophy, if that makes sense.
Yeah, um, and I don't, I just, given that I think the LPR policy was done, as Councilmembers just said, years ago after
It was just updated. We just, we just updated it last week.
Okay. Um, can you share that with council as well?
Um, I thought I sent it to you, but we definitely can share.
I think the only thing I, we got was the, um, and I just looked online, was the Q and A document.
I, I will make sure you get it.
Yeah, because I, I think it's important that we document that and that's specific um, in terms, so make sure it's, everything is consistent.
We, we can absolutely send it to you.
Okay, sorry, Councilman.
Yeah, no, thank you. That, that goes towards my, my concerns about how, how they are utilized. And um, I myself have, have been pulled over for a um, a registration that my, my leasing um, company was not, had not renewed, and I'm sure it was tagged by one of, one of those.
A lot of times, those can be educational things as well. Whole person over, hey, by the way, your license, your registration is, is, is expired or suspended. Um, sometimes people don't know, like in your particular case.
Right.
So, uh, you know, traffic, traffic safety is about education, uh, you know, but when there's serious offenses, that's what we're focused on.
Yeah.
Chief, uh, LPR through MBA, we have no access and we have no desire to include expired registrations to the hot list.
So I would, I was using, I was using that as an example of, of things that we don't really focus on here.
Right. I was just giving that, is it, so we know that is not, will never be part of the hot list.
Okay, that's good to know. Um, the other question I had was about, um, is there any kind of linkage between the system or the data and any kind of immigration um, status databases or, or reporting?
I'll let Sergeant Johnson to answer that question.
We, as MCAC, we have routinely, in writing and in conversations with the Department of Homeland Security, uh, refuse to provide any bulk load data. If they are working a crim, again, LPR data has to be used for legitimate law enforcement purpose. Um, and we follow the Maryland law, which is going to tie to criminal action, a serious motor vehicle offense, missing persons, uh, the alerts, as your chief talked about, the amber alert, silver alert, blue alerts, or missing person. Immigration does not, a civil violation under immigration law does not count. And we do not provide that information at all. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a denial. It's an automatic denial.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Cercy.
Great. Thank you so much um, for this presentation, and it's actually really helpful. Because, you know, I know that one of the comments that came through earlier was that we're not making steps on the Public Safety Task Force recommendation. And I would, I would argue we are doing a lot. It's a little all over the place, but, but the punch list is getting punched. Um, so one question I have is about, and maybe this happens with MCAT around analysis of the data that comes through, from the perspective of um, looking at perhaps disparities in terms of what's kind of being picked up on the LPRs and, and who's using them, or kind of what kinds of analysis beyond, you know, just matching in terms of the hot list um, goes on at, 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 and MCAT in terms of understanding around disparities, or whether or not there are certain groups of individuals that may be um, getting flagged a little more than others, or common flags that you all are seeing, like, or, or do you do that at all, or do your crime analysts do that?
The crime analysts do not access information um, to access any PII on any of the tags that are scanned unless there is a criminal nexus to the tag. So we, we don't generally do that. What we can tell you is that in Maryland, we do look at the number of alarms we get for each individual category. Uh, MBA is one of the highest numbers because MBA has approximately between two hundred and three hundred thousand tags. Uh, MBA is one of the highest numbers because MBA has approximately between two hundred and three hundred thousand tags out of the over, I think, like eight million tags in Maryland that are entered for hot list violations. Um, we look at the acceptance rate of, um, the alarms, we look for quality of reads. But when we look at the individual who's driving the car, LPR, uh, your chief said it earlier, it's designed to look at the tag. And unless we have a reason to, we're not even going back farther and running the tag. So if it's a regular tag, it was a normal read, unless we're accessing information from investigation, we have no idea who is driving the car. And we actually have no interest in querying that data. Uh, we believe that would be a violation of our own internal policies. There's no reason to run a tag that has no criminal nexus or any legitimate law enforcement purpose. So the analysis stays away from that aspect, because if we start doing that, then we're starting to look at beyond the scope of our, um, policy and our intent of the LPR program.
Okay, that's helpful. So basically, for the readers, the, the reads, it's just the plates. For those that aren't a hit, you would never query or kind of get any PII because there's no need to. For those that are a hit, then basically if there is a need to query, then you would pull additional information and work with the local jurisdiction on that.
Yes, ma'am. Unless the officer in the road, so the process, if they get an alarm for a violation, uh, we're looking at the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment. Is, and that's, it's a test question. I actually make them write it out. We don't do multiple choice for that when it deals with that. They have to understand that the Fourth Amendment is going to protect the search and seizure for unreasonables and Fourteenth Amendment for due process. We, we hammer that through the entire program for the period of instruction from establishing, you have to have a reason to stop a car. So that alarm itself isn't good enough. We tell them that they have to, at that point, if they get an alarm, they have to query the alarm. They have to know either from their dispatcher or from, uh, their own terminal in their vehicle that the alarm is valid. We take it a step farther. We recommend that if you're going to stop a car for driving while suspended, you need to verify, even though case law says you can simply stop a car because the registered owner suspended, we, we talk about Kansas for Glover, which is a recent case law. And say, take it a step farther, identify the driver. Once you identify the driver, if you pulled the picture up, you save the picture prior to you turning your lights on. And that way it gives the agency an opportunity to say, my officer took every step to make sure he stopped the car because the person was driving. Or we've had cases where I've stopped the car because the passenger was wanted for a felony, uh, warrant. Uh, but we have a picture of it and we document that. We document it, the ability to query it through the electronic ticketing software. It tells us when you hit traffic stop. We can look at the, through Maryland State Police side of it, not related to, um, MCAC at all. They can tell you who queried a person and when they queried it. So we know if that happened. So there's ways we can go back and determine that the officer followed the, uh, training that we give them. And we have yet to have to suspend an officer since we started the training program. But without a doubt, we will suspend officers who, uh, fail to follow the policy.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kohler.
Thanks. I know we want to wrap up, so just two points. One, I agree with my colleagues who expressed concern about the so-called minor crimes and I, I would like to see that policy. And I, I don't know whether it would make sense for us to more explicitly say, uh,
Can I, can I just say on that policy, everything can't be in a policy. If we put something in a policy that prohibits absolutely doing something.
I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, I, I'd like to see what it says.
Well, I, if, but I just want to say, if we are talking about a policy and changing a policy that says, we absolutely, officers absolutely cannot do A, B, C, and D. We tie their hands on occasions when A, B, and C, and D may be warranted. So if, if the, if the process isn't, the thought process is to change the policy to specifically say, we will absolutely prohibit A, B, C, and D. I'm not for that. We have not done that with our traffic policy and it has worked. So it, yeah, I.
I'll just say my thought policy is, if we're going to have, say, we're going to spend money on a system which potentially enables this, I want to repeat what the policy is. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're very happy to share the policy with you.
The other thing is just for, um, Sergeant Johnson, when you do the annual audit, uh, have there been any instances or many that you've looked at where you felt like, um, you know, in three percent of the cases, they really shouldn't have made the request? Or maybe in a handful of cases, we shouldn't have honored it even though we did? Or ha- have they been really minimal?
We have actually, I took the program over in twenty sixteen, uh, started the, as the actual coordinator for the entire state in twenty eighteen. So I've done the audit since twenty eighteen. We have not had an issue that reached the level of the audit because of our watch section, or, or watch personnel who take the initial request. Are very quick to deny a request. If you cannot prove a nexus to the crime, they will ask information. And they'll deny it. In the moment they deny it, they notify. If there's a question, they'll notify to me directly regardless of time, date. And we'll make a decision. So because of that process, we have denied, uh, anything that comes close from even as the chief talked about entering something on the hot list. We won't enter something on a hot list unless we have a reason to do it. So, so far, uh, we audit each year one percent. Or so depending on how many requests we get for service, we go through and pull a complete audit, which we talk about documenting. And we actually tell the agency, you need to submit the report. And inside that report, we're looking that they've listed a crime. Then we're looking for that the case number matches the request and that the tag is entered in the request. Or we've had a couple of cases in PG County, uh, including the recent homicide on Route fifty with a tow truck driver. We had to do a little bit more work, but it's documented. If they don't have a letter or the, the report, because in open case, the chief of the agency has to write a letter documenting that the request was permissible. So, so far, we haven't had an issue, but we have rejected requests, uh, through our screening process.
Thank you.
Which.
Great, thanks. Um, I think I just have two quest, two follow-up questions. Um, Officer Robinson, did you say that the, um, the LPR is always on? Or does it, with Officer Sims or whoever is certified to use it, turn it on, turn it off?
It is on while he's doing his normal patrol.
Mm-hmm. So is there?
Throughout his shift, it's.
Yeah.
It's right.
Mm-hmm. Is there any reason to have it?
Oh, you can't turn it off?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think one of the recommendations from, you know, some privacy folks is not to necessarily have it on all the time. Um, one of the concerns, and this is probably less of concern with ones that are mounted on vehicles, is that, um, and more of a concern when we have the one on the, um, the stationary one, is that if you're constantly looking at something, you're, you can, privacy concerns are that you can track people. Um, so, um, and look at like patterns of cars and things.
Can, can I just touch on what that would be used for?
Yeah.
If we had problem crimes, so we had a rash of burglaries in a certain area, that's where we would deploy that. We wouldn't just put it randomly out there. That would be deployed in areas that we knew we were having crime. So rash of thefts in Ward Two, we would place it in that area and then be able to, as the, as the deputy chief spoke of earlier, analyze those tags. So if one tag was there for every theft, so that's what we would kind of utilize that for. We wouldn't just place that, that unit out randomly.
Right.
On, on any given day. The ones that are deployed out on a daily basis are the, are the mobile ones. So, so that one we did, but we're not going to say we're going to just place it on Maple Avenue for a random reason.
Right.
I, I don't know if that helps.
And, yeah, and Officer Sims isn't always sitting on New Hampshire Avenue at the same spot, right?
I hope not.
Yeah. Um, and that would be good just to see in the, maybe in the policy as well, that we're not looking at just like putting an LPR somewhere and then just having it on all the time.
I'm not sure, is it in the, it's, it's in the policy currently, but yeah, that's the, that's the role of kind of having that, that, uh, that stationary LPRs to place it in places where we can, where we have problems.
Great. Um, and then, um, I had a question, um, I'm sorry, I, I forgot your name from MCAC. Um, when you, you talked about doing the audit you have to do, is that public information, the audit you do or not?
The audit is public. We submitted to the legislators, um, and Annapolis to both the, um, Delicate Moon is the primary who gets it for the, uh, and then we send it to the Senate side as well. And then it's, it's, it's actually one of the, your LPR data is protected under state law. It's not releasable, so we don't release LPR data. But we do release the report, uh, the findings of the report every year, which includes, uh, links to what our policies, MCAC posts our policy publicly on LPR. And then we list in the report, uh, we'll tell you how many, how many queries we made during the year. We'll tell you how many reads we captured, how many reads we retained, uh, what, not which agencies directly, but if we had a federal request. If we had a local state request, all that's in report. If, um, I'll send it to, I have Sergeant Robinson's email. I'll send you guys, he can share with you guys the last couple of years, uh, audit requests or all, or whole complete audit.
Great. Um, and Chief, maybe we could put that in your annual report, um, as an appendix or something or reference it. It may already be in there. I may.
It, it is not, but we can try to find a place to get that to you, whether or not it's in the annual report. Or maybe we can put it on our traffics, probably better served putting in our annual trap data dump that we're going to be doing on our annual basis that we, that we did based on the, the recommendations of the public safety task force to release all public safety data, arrest data and traffic data. So maybe it would be best to go there, but either way, we can make sure we get it.
Yeah, because I think one of the other things that is recommended on, like safeguards is doing an audit. We wouldn't necessarily do the audit because MCAC has the, um, information on it. But our, you know, if people are looking for it, like the task force members or others who are wanting to know more about our LPR process and audit, that would just be a good thing for them to be able to see.
Well, we, we can put it in both places. We can put it in the annual report and the traffic statistics that we're.
Great. I think all my other questions got answered as we were going through it. Um, but I'd love to see the policy and I just want to, um, I'm not seeing any other lights or anything. And I just want to say thank you so much for, um, the information, um, for staying with us so late. And, uh, providing us with more information on MCAC. Uh, and thank you to our police department for being here. Um, as I mentioned, this was a lot of information we wanted to take in. Uh, we will discuss, um, Councilmember Seersey, Siemens and myself are meeting with the police, um, police chief's advisory council on this.
Uh, police, police chief's advisory board.
Board, thank you.
Committee board, it's.
Committee board, um, on the sixteenth, is that right?
I believe it is May sixteenth, Monday, Monday, if, 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 if May sixteenth is the Monday, that's the day.
Yeah, all right. One, one of those days is on our calendar, um, and we'll continue to have these conversations. So thank you very much and I think we're done for the evening. We'll be back here on Wednesday to continue our regular business.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.